To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll take roll call. Everybody is present in the count of four. All right, I would ask if there is any public comment for the public. I'd just like to remind everybody that the public hearing for Northfield Road is now closed. We won't be taking any public comment regarding that. Seeing none?
I'm Attorney Vincent Cruz, Attorney General for the Republic. I'm going to be addressed, I'd like to address the site plan review you have on.
Yeah, that's under an agenda item. Is that for Summer Street?
Confirmation of that. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Any public comment from the board?
Yeah, I have one. I passed out before the meeting began.
Thank you.
Couple of things. One is this one agenda item that we have later on. The other one is the school initiative. There's nothing really to act on it so much today as much as I'm just looking to kind of throw out just a framework and I can talk more about that at the very end of the meeting during the public conference.
All right, great, thank you. Alrighty, getting into our agenda. Our first appointment is 994 Northfield Road, Board deliberations. The public hearing was closed. Attorney Costa was supposed to be...
Yes.
Oh, he is, okay. Would you like to come sit and join us at the table? Due to the fact that some members were needed more time, we invited Attorney Costa to come. So I'd like to give everyone the opportunity, if they have any questions for him, if we can wait one minute until he comes up. I just would like to point out, we did receive a document Thursday afternoon. As the timeline for our rules and regs was lapsed and that the public hearing was closed, we can't, well, we won't accept it for the record, but I would like, I guess, to give the opportunity to the applicant if they would like it for consideration, if they'd like to reopen the public hearing.
We do not wish to reopen the public hearing.
All right. I guess I will open it up to the board if they have any questions or comments for Attorney Costa.
I don't have any questions.
All right.
But I thank you, Mr. Costa, for making yourself available to us over these past couple of weeks.
Of course.
I do not have any questions at this time.
Has everyone felt they've had enough time to, for consideration? And there's no lingering questions? All right, so I guess we can start with each individual's member's comments, if they have any, and go back into deliberation.
Sure. The majority of, not the majority, all of my comments were made regarding this at the last meeting. I think that my opinion, my, not so much opinion, as much as my personal assessment on how I look at the proposal, whether, how I review its compliance with the bylaws, I have not changed in my assessment from our last discussion on this. But I do want to, you know, take a moment to think, thank the settlers as well as Nexamp for, you know, putting together this proposal for considering our community as what they'd be looking at having a development in. I also want to thank the residents for their involvement in this process, coming out, having their voices heard, and for getting involved. So, thank you.
I've made several comments over the course of the presentation, and I just wanted to summarize my thoughts, having gone through it, reflecting on the whole thing. I have, like, a two-pager, which I'd like to read, if that's all right.
By all means.
So, we were asked to determine whether specific site is an appropriate location for such an installation. And I found that to be a pretty complex question. I believe they've proven that interconnection is not a problem, that they meet the 20-acre minimum, and that they have the technology to work within the natural topography of the site. However, there's nothing in our bylaw that states that a 20-acre parcel is entitled to a 20-acre project. And I believe we have at least two conditions at our disposal that seem to give us some jurisdiction over the intensity of use. Furthermore, the specific topography of the site raises concerns for me in relation to the scale of the project. Under testimony, the proponent could not guarantee, because of the inclining topography of the site, that the site would not be visible in the upper reaches of the canopy or even above the canopy. And that incongruous visual would be particularly disturbing for the surrounding neighborhood, and would significantly detract from the natural rural character of the neighborhood. We were further asked to find that the proposed installation will not adversely affect the existing neighborhood by the following: historical significance. The historical significance of the area is related to its designation as recreation land, which was traditionally been open to use such as walking, exploring, riding, and skiing, as well as golfing. Fencing off 30% to 40% of this lot seems overly intensive. Scenic vistas. It's part of the charm, character, and attraction of Lunenburg that we have limited density, limited industrialization, and greater expanses of open land, woodland, and natural features, which are assets and amenities that are sought out by many people. This installation will clear cut 36 acres of woodland, including an 18-acre footprint of just panels, which is comparable to Gillette Stadium's footprint. And it climbs 150 feet up the hill. Again, for comparison, Gillette Stadium rises 160 feet. I don't think it's unreasonable to think that the same rural and natural characteristics that the proponent markets to draw customers to his golf course are probably the same characteristics that his neighbors value about their neighborhood. So, it takes me to, let's see, natural and rural character. Clearly, a large landowner has a right to develop his land with some sort of solar installation. However, he doesn't have the right to change the long-term character of the neighborhood, impacting his neighbor's quality of life, or harming the property values by dictating a change of zoning from residential use, or in this case, recreational use, to what can only be characterized as light industrial use, at his own discretion, which is why we're charged with reviewing the application. And clearly, it is the intent of the section to give us the ability to protect the natural and rural character of our neighborhoods, as these are important elements that contribute to the value of the property and quality of life. We are, after all, a bedroom and agricultural community, not an industrial community. We did this when we set aside large tracts of land specifically for byright siting of large-scale solar, and by providing for special permits under very specific circumstances in any zone. I think the scale or intensity of use as proposed, adjacent to an existing neighborhood climbing above the surrounding tree line, in an 18-acre mass of light industrial equipment, will not meet several of the applicant's stated expectations, namely that they stated in their narrative that, given the amount of natural wooded buffer provided, the array will not be visible to abutters. Contradicting this statement under direct testimony, they have stated that it can't be made invisible. It will be climbing uphill, and it may be seen above the abutting tree lines in some cases. That fact alone tells me that we have a problem with density or intensity and scale. But in spite of repeatedly explaining that fact, the applicant seems unwilling to compromise on intensity of use. I don't argue against large-scale solar installations in general. I believe we have areas in town where the scale of this particular project would be appropriate, including the approximately 190 acres set aside as byright site for large-scale solar. Rather, I believe that this particular development at this scale or intensity, on this particular site, would substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of this bylaw to protect existing neighborhoods from the impact of large-scale industrial commercial uses in residential areas. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a prepared statement or anything, so I'll just reiterate where I was at the last meeting. On this topic, I thought that the applicant did a good job of meeting what the requests of the planning board were, to comply with the bylaw as we've written it. The testimony that was heard from the neighbors indicated that their expectations were met. My primary concern was with the screening at the site, and the offsets, which have all been made to be compliant with my interpretation of the bylaw. So, I still think that this plan is an appropriate use for the land, given that the reasons for it have financial consequences to the surrounding property and the surrounding property use. I also think it's a benefit to the town, given the pilot for the town, and the donation of conservation land, and the guaranteed access to the remaining trails on that property. And there's nothing that would prevent the owner of that property from turning around and selling it for housing development or other purposes. Just because it's in the chapter that it's in doesn't mean it is forced to remain in the chapter. So, we all think of this as the, I guess, the worst use of this land, or it's sounding like people think this is the worst use of this land. But I personally don't think this is the worst use of this land. I think there could be other unintentional consequences of ruling against this solar development for the town. That's it.
All right, thank you.
I also do not have a prepared statement. I would echo the previous two statements, as well as the third. I don't think that this is the worst use. I think that there, with a creative mind, there could be plenty of worse uses. I do not feel that it is an appropriate use for the area. And I appreciate the first two written statements delineating all the examples on how and why. This being a special permit, not a byright, not within the large-scale ground-mounted solar vataic area. I don't feel that the standards have been met for the planning board to approve it, and me specifically. So, that's about all I have to say. And I do appreciate the effort and the time spent by the landowner. That's really all I have to say.
All right. For me, it came down to the scale of the project. I still feel that there's room for compromise for an approval. However, I was pretty specific with my concerns about it impacting the abutters with the visual buffers. I was pretty specific with the numbers, and I'd just like to read from the applicant's narrative of the project in regards to impacts on the natural and rural character. And it basically says, "The site was chosen for development of a solar energy system due to its existing characteristics and natural buffers. The array will be remote to adjacent abutters as well as the property itself. It will be set back from the street, that it will not be visible from Northfield Road or New West Townsend Roads to the west of the site. A substantial natural buffer of wooded area is provided to existing homes of adjacent abutters on Northfield Road and New West Townsend Road. There are no abutting homes or buildings north or east of the array. Given the amount of natural wooded buffer provided by the proposed array location, the array will not be visible by the abutters." And I will move on to the second paragraph, and it reiterates, "As the project will not be visible from the neighborhood, there will be no impact to the natural and rural character of the neighborhood." As we've seen in subsequent meetings, they proposed that there's no way it couldn't possibly be seen. So, as Matthew stated at the last meeting, I like to take people for their word, but I also hold them to their word, as I would expect for myself. To me, they did not mitigate the impacts to the abutters as they had proposed in their first narrative. And for me, I think there's room for compromise, but if they're unwilling to compromise and reduce the scale, then it will not get my support. So, I think everybody's had their chance to speak. From what I'm hearing, I'm not seeing a majority of support from the board. I'd like to ask if the applicant, sorry, Attorney Costa might...
May I, Mr. Chairman, with your permission?
By all means.
So, I guess I'd just like to remind the board of a few things before, procedural issues more than substantive, before we proceed any further. So, as you know, you have two applications before you, even though they're part of a joint public hearing. You've got a special permit application. You've also got an application for site plan approval. Each of these is under a different section of your zoning bylaw. With respect to the special permit, a supermajority vote is required. You need four out of five members to approve that special permit. Consequently, you could have a three-to-two vote, and that would still be deemed a denial of the special permit. To approve a special permit, you need to make affirmative findings with respect to each of the standards that are contained within your zoning bylaw. With respect to denials, you need to only find that any one of those criteria is deemed not satisfied by the board, and that can be a sufficient basis for a denial of a special permit. You received correspondence, and I want to just document this for the record, because I know it was touched upon early on, very briefly, but maybe it wasn't clear to those who are in the audience. But you received correspondence. I received a copy of it a week or so ago, maybe less?
Thursday.
Thursday, from counsel representing the applicant. I understand different counsel than has been present at these meetings in the past, that addressed some legal issues, but also addressed the substantive issues. Essentially included a chart that walked through the special permit criteria, as well as the site plan review standards, and included facts, statements with respect to each of those, somewhat more extensive than what had been submitted by the engineering firm as part of the original application submittals. That information was received after the close of the public hearing, as you know. I wasn't at your last meeting, but I reviewed the video. I understand you closed and voted to close the public hearing. Consequently, it's my advice that it would not be appropriate for you to consider that information. I did recommend that an opportunity should be provided to the applicant to reopen the public hearing, if the applicant so chose, to get that information into the record. I heard the applicant decline that opportunity, and so that information should not be considered as part of the board's deliberation. With respect to site plan approval, that also requires a separate vote this evening, even though it's part of the same public hearing. That separate vote should focus upon the separate criteria for the site plan approval. That only requires a simple majority vote from your board to grant site plan approval, but nevertheless, you need that simple majority to grant it. Anything less would be a denial. And again, the same standard applies with respect to denial, you need to, approval or denial, you need to base it in the criteria that are contained within your zoning bylaw. I think that's all I have to say. I think maybe where you were going, Mr. Chairman, and I would certainly recommend it to the board. I appreciate, when I represent applicants, when boards afford me the courtesy, and I would advise the board, because I heard the comments that were just made too, that it's always wise to give the applicant an opportunity, if the applicant so chooses, to seek a withdrawal. I'm not suggesting that you would need to grant it. That requires a majority vote from your board to allow withdrawal anytime after notice of a public hearing is published. But I always make it a practice to give the opportunity to the applicant to withdraw if it appears that there may not be that requisite supermajority vote to approve the project. The benefit to withdrawing for an applicant is that the applicant can resubmit an application for a project that is not substantially different, but somewhat different than what is presently before you. Without that withdrawal, if the board denies, subject to appeal or litigation or whatnot, the applicant would not be permitted to make substantially the same application to your board for a two-year period under Chapter 48, Section 16. With that, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So, I guess I would put that question to the board, whether or not we want to give them the opportunity to withdraw.
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, maybe no problem with that.
Pose that question to the applicant, hearing the input from the board.
We are not interested in withdrawing the application.
Alrighty, well, I guess I would, I guess I have a question for Attorney Costa. At the last meeting that we had, there was a question as to whether or not motions have to be made in the affirmative. Is that...
It's only, it's only the ultimate vote that is important, so they don't necessarily need to be made in the affirmative, but you just have to reverse the quantum of vote required if you're making a vote in the negative. So, I'm certainly...
Just because it was brought up at the last meeting, I just wanted to...
That said, Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the project for 994 Northfield Road as presented.
Got to say one or the other.
One or the other, it's going to be the...
The special permit.
Okay.
Second. Any more discussion? I'll take a vote, then.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now for site plan approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the proposal for site plan for 994 Northfield Road.
Is there a second?
You deny the approval.
That we deny...
Site plan approval.
Thank you, that we deny site plan approval for 994 Northfield Road.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those opposed? You need to vote?
All those opposed?
Yes. No, that would be aye.
Okay, thank you, aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Hence the problem with negatively wording.
Thank you.
That closes the proceedings on this matter.
Would you like me to draft the decisions on the board's behalf? I can work cooperatively with Adam to draft those and get you drafts for your review and approval.
Do you need a motion on that?
No.
Yes.
Are there any objections?
Do you have a copy of both my prepared statements and what's?
I'd like copies of all the materials that have been submitted by individual board members. I understand that they've been read into the record or summarized for the record, because I've reviewed the proceedings. I haven't attended, and I was at your proceeding two meetings ago. But yes, anything you could submit to me would be helpful.
Okay.
All right. Alrighty, next will be our public hearing for 234 Summer Street. This is a new public hearing, so if the clerk wouldn't mind reading it.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2017, 6:35 PM, Joseph Bellada Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and discuss a modification to a site plan approval under Section 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg, Mass. The modification is to place the fence on the property line at 234 Summer Street, Map 117, Parcel 0031, Lunenburg, Mass. Owner/applicant is Stanley Miller, 233 Summer Street, Lunenburg, Mass. The application and plans are available for viewing in the planning office.
Alrighty, if you just wouldn't mind identifying your name and address.
Stanley Miller, 234 Summer Street. I have a letter here from National Grid saying that it can't be on the nine-foot section because of the Boston Gas Service lines. They own, I just thought they own eight my easement, nine feet off my side of my house. They gave $8,000 for the previous owner. And my property line is 10 feet. I only have 10 feet to pull a car down there, so it has to be on the property line. I cannot go within their limits. Any instructions of any kind whatsoever includes trees, shrubberies, acceptance, and in writing, is a case of the gas operations has opposed the construction of the fence within this easement. That's their nine feet. And I own 10 feet. And nobody here would put a fence a foot on your property line. No, you do it on the property line, you know, away from it. Like, I wouldn't put it on my neighbor's a foot over either, also. I have that letter here from the gas company, if anybody wants to see that.
I believe we have all that.
We have all that. All day of an email. Any other questions?
So, we did, I know Michael Ray was not here for the initial public hearing when they got the approval, but I did re-watch it. From my recollection in watching it, we did agree to allow them to put the fence on the line.
On the property, yes.
But in my interpretation of "on the line" is that if the line is a plane, your posts, probably, which would stick out the most, would have to, can't go over the plane, because that would go into...
Correct. It has to be on the property. I cannot go with their nine-foot easement. That's their property to maintain that gas line. So, if I put it even on that, between that nine feet...
Well, you have 10.1 feet from the corner of your house to the line. So, the nine feet, is that from your house to the...
No, the property line. My property line is 10 feet.
So, you have a foot in between your house?
I have a foot...
So, you have a foot in between your house and the easement, or a foot in between the line and the easement?
The line and the easement.
So, you have a foot of...
No, it's from the, I believe it's from the house.
From the house, I'm sorry.
To the easement, yeah.
Yeah. It's from the house. So, I literally have 10 feet with the fence on the line, and the car is seven foot wide, so...
Can I ask a quick question? Does the easement also go onto your neighbor's property?
Correct. We split it.
So, the easement, the easement borders the properties. It's a shared easement between your two, and you cannot put a fence on the easement?
All right, well...
And then, the structure, another thing, I'm sorry, not to cut you off, and they approved an eight-foot fence. An eight-foot fence is a commercial fence, and it's double the money.
What was the...
It's $7,600 for the fence instead of $3,800.
Yeah, I believe we approved it.
We had had that discussion.
Eight foot is, eight foot's kind of, nobody has an eight-foot fence.
Sorry, regarding the limitations of the driveway before...
Eight foot, when you go up, then you're not going to be able to see coming out of the driveway. Somebody's walking down the street.
No, but it goes down, we approved, what, two sections of five, and then one that goes up, and then the after that. So, it wasn't...
I can get you the approval in a second.
It's right here. It's in the paperwork. It said, "The plan was amended June 2nd to include privacy fence detail, as the fences supplied in eight-foot sections commencing at the property line. The first 16 feet will be at the height of three feet, and the remaining fence sections will be at the height of eight feet for the remainder of the property line." But it sounds like there cannot be a fence anywhere along the property line because of the easement.
Well, due to the fact that the easement covers the line, if it was from, when I got the letter, I thought the easement was just on his property and had a...
So, you're saying that the easement, I'm sorry, to the chair, you both have equal pieces of easement on your property?
Correct. Yeah, it's a shared driveway, and now we're putting a fence up.
Okay.
We're blocking the easement, which has been an easement for, since the building's been up.
Okay. Is that...
And there's a three-inch gas line that comes from the main of the street, Summer Street, all the way back to the factory out back. It's a four-acre factory on a 12-acre lot. It's three inches. But when we dug the foundation, it was, it's a pretty, and they had to maintain that over time, you know, rip my driveway up, and then you put a fence up, and then the fence has to come down.
Well, then, I mean, isn't this really just a question of who has jurisdiction over the easement? If we cannot make them put a fence up on the easement, we cannot make them put a fence up on the easement.
Well, but also during the public hearing process, the neighbor addressed concerns and the applicant agreed.
I understand that, but they both share that easement.
And the property is not being used for anything. There's no business there or anything. You can ask to him, there's not a business there, there's nothing going on.
My point is, they both shared the easement, excuse me for cutting you off. They both shared the easement. So, they both should have been aware of the easement at some point in history, when they, when they either signed off on the easement, or they, you know, where they bought the property with the easement. So, they both knew it was there. Whether or not we can require them to put a fence on it, then becomes their problem, not ours. Do you understand what I'm saying? We can make the order, but if we don't have jurisdiction over it, we can't force the issue, so...
Yeah, so I think the only thing we could do is amend the site plan approval to remove the requirement for the fence.
Yeah, I would like to actually, we had had this, I had had this question to Adam this afternoon, that the burden of proof regarding the easement, what they can do on it is on the applicant, not on us, correct? It's their duty.
Yeah, and again, if I remember correctly, the discussion has always been that the easement came off of the building nine feet. With anybody that's come in to discuss it with me, the gas easement is wholly on your property and extends from the foundation out nine feet.
Correct.
So, there's the property line, there's one foot, then the easement starts and moves in towards your structure.
No, away from my structure. If you're looking at the...
If you take, if you take a look at the map, you can see there's a little bit of space between the house and the easement line, and it goes right to the property line. But now he's saying that...
But where does the easement end?
Inside the neighbor's yard?
The left side, yeah. The left side.
Do you know how deep it goes into his yard?
It goes a sort of a little bit of angle.
Okay, because it doesn't.
It's all marked out, it's all marked out.
It's not on this map.
We did go and look at them today, they did, you did have it resurveyed last night.
Yeah, it was resurveyed, they moved the pins over, it's all surveyed.
So, you. So, you have 10 feet, 10.1 to the property line.
Right.
So, how far from the property line on to the other person's property does the easement go?
To the left of it, that's it.
Just on the side.
Just on the side.
So, so let me ask this question then.
You see how the, it goes on an angle with the porches, you see the porches?
Yeah.
You see the structure? Okay, that's 10 feet over, then goes down, then goes on, see the angle of it? It was off to that angle. Look at the back of the house, from the back of the house, the porch is on the front, now it was in the back.
Yeah. We have a dashed line, it's 10.1 feet.
Correct, to the corner of the foundation.
Is this what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the house, this is the back of the house, right here, see that 10.1?
Yeah.
That's the back of the house where the garages are, there's two-car garage back there.
Right.
Underneath the house.
Yeah. But it runs the length of the property?
Yeah, all the way down.
Stops on the property line.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so at the front of the, back of the house is 10 feet, and it's 10.1 at the front, at the Summer Street?
Correct.
I mean, reverse that.
Correct, 10 and 10.1.
At the front, and 10.1 at the back.
Correct.
Okay.
And so the easement itself is only nine feet wide, including the porch that goes onto your neighbor's property?
And he has, on his side, he has probably no nine feet, 10 feet on his side.
He has another nine feet.
20 feet wide easement.
So, it's a 20-foot wide easement?
It was a road.
Oh, it is, okay.
It is a 20, that's what I'm trying to clarify. It is a 20-foot wide easement, right?
Yes.
So, nine feet is on you.
So, it doesn't matter whether it's on your property or on his property, the easement spans nine feet into both of your properties at least.
And they will not let us put a fence on it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I think it becomes an issue where we have to retract the requirement, and the, they could appeal to the owners of the easement as to whether or not they could put some kind of temporary fencing structure up, but that is not our jurisdiction.
The only other option I can think of is if there's some way of doing a fencing that does not penetrate the earth, and I don't know of anything that we could do that would.
There was one there, there was one there during construction, but that blew over with the wind. But it's not going to work.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I feel a little disadvantaged, because I know that, looking through everything else, the four of you have been fully involved in this process, and I think that there's, and I did not review the previous meetings to get the background, so I do intend to recuse myself, or abstain, rather, from this vote, but I would like to know if the, I mean, it seems, from what I've seen, is that the neighbor really wanted this fence.
Correct.
That the neighbor was opposed to the project, that they wanted the fence, is it possible to, have you talked to the neighbor, is he open to you putting it on his property?
Nobody's going to put a fence.
He can't, because the easement is on both of their properties.
He has the line.
On his property, on either the easement.
It could go nine feet in on his property.
That would be 10 feet in on his property.
Just as far in.
But I did ask him if we could do it a foot on his side because of the easement, and he said no.
Well, if you can't do it on the easement.
We can't do it either way.
You can't do it for at least nine feet into his property, and you can't plant trees, according to this letter, you can't plant trees either.
Nobody's allowed you to put a fence on their property, nobody's going to go over, nobody's allowed you to do that, who does that? If you have your own property, nobody, you know.
No, no, I, my question was really because, and I, we haven't heard from him yet.
Correct.
What I've read was just that he wanted this fence, and that was why I was saying, well, there's a problem, has there been a compromise that maybe he's okay with?
There was at length discussion at the original public hearings regarding the width of the driveway and regarding the fence, the compromise to satisfy the abutter's concerns was the fence. Now, right, well.
But I was unaware that it was the gas line, yeah, I didn't know that.
So.
There it is.
So, first I would like to hear from the abutter, since he does have the vested interest in this.
Chairman, my, if I could see the plan, I'm, I'm struggling through my glasses to see this one. Here you go.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Attorney Vincent Pousatieri from Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, my pleasure to represent Dean O'Pier Marini before your board tonight. So, I appreciate the concept of, let's find a way to compromise and try to resolve this, but I think what we have found ourselves is in the center of a dispute between two neighbors that share a very close property line. And if you look at the property historically, you would know that my client was there since 1987, that this lot shared a dirt, and then again, a paved common driveway, we've heard your petitioner refer to it as a shared driveway, and had done so for many years. That continued to occur up until recently, where an application was made, not before this board, but before the zoning board of the town of Lunenburg, and in that context, they sought to get a special permit. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, they could get a special permit provided they met a certain standard, the standard it being that the project wouldn't be, just in short language, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming use that was already there. Members of that board thought that there was a detriment to the neighborhood, but the board was enabled by your protective bylaws to provide for some conditions, one of which was the installation of the fence, which was intended to protect or to mitigate the detriment to renovating the property and putting it into a new use. I apologize if my phone's not off, I actually have my phone here, so that wasn't bad. So, in essence, this fence was a necessary and a condition for the finding that there was not a detrimental, or more detrimental, impact on the neighborhood, and absent the fence, if we find now that the fence can't be constructed at all, it's really going to call into question the entire project. Now, I think our hands are tied, I think your board has clearly identified that if there's an easement, there's nothing that we can do here as a city or town to force the construction of a fence, and I would absolutely agree with that. But I don't think also that we can change the decision of the zoning board, which the vote was, and if I could read the motion from that board, just for the benefit, so that you would have it in your, fresh in your minds. After due deliberation, Alfred Gravale, I hope I pronounced his name right. Say again? Gravale?
Yeah.
Okay. Made a motion to grant a special permit with the condition that the new home maintain the existing footprint and provide for a solid construction fence on the west side of the property, based on the finding that the proposal would not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So, that is a very, it was clearly called out in the motion as a condition, then the matter, by implication of your ordinance and the passance, and the passage of that special permit, brings the matter before your board for a site plan review. During this entire proceeding, very capable engineers, Ross and Associates, have been involved, working on the project, as a matter of fact, the plan, I struggle to read with my bifocals, and maybe it's time for me to go back in, was prepared by Ross and Associates, and I am telling you, I'm having a hard time to see if they called out this easement, maybe they were just simply unaware of it, maybe it's right here in front of my face and I can't, can't read it, but if it, if they were aware of it at that time, that there was an easement here, and they were practicing before the board, facing a condition for a west, a west-side fence, that certainly should have been an issue that was raised at that time. I'm going to ask at this point that your body decide to deny the request for a modification of the site plan review. To do anything other than that, or to alleviate the condition, would be in essence to change the decision of the zoning board, and to a certain degree frustrate the intent and the purposes of the bylaw and in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, that did require that finding. And then I think what we'd have to do is, and I think the board has instructed the property owner to approach the easement holder and see what, if anything, can be done, and then absent that, we have to review whether or not the conditioned special permit can lawfully be abided by. I look at that special permit, I think about the neighborhood, and I know we serve on municipal boards because we love the cities and towns that we live in, and we certainly want that area to be redeveloped and, and moving forward in the right direction, but this also brings to light the other concern. At the time, this was more of a commercial area, at the time, it made sense to run a three-inch gas pipe straight through this shared driveway area where these two commercial operations were operating, and that certainly didn't seem to frustrate any effort of having, on the one hand, a residential component, and on the other hand, more of a commercial component. And now, as we, we're digging into this problem a little bit more, we're seeing that, you know, perhaps there was some reason why these pre-existing non-conforming uses, or non-conforming structures, either, we have to approach them with maybe a little bit more care as we look at them in the future, but just review my notes, I'm sure I've missed something.
Where would your client like to see the fence at?
I'm sorry, sir.
Where would your client like to see the fence at?
Well, he would like to see the, my client's objection is minute, but it is a reasonable one. He would like to see the fence, to answer the question directly, six inches off of the property line, towards the house where it currently was set by a proposed site plan review, and it's not simply because that's the way it was decided, it's because as a shared driveway, and as the use has gone over the course of 30, almost maybe, well, I don't think quite 40 years, but over the course of over 30 years, to operate a motor vehicle right up against the line of that property with a fence right on you is an intrusion on our ability to maneuver the vehicle, particularly when looked at in historical context. And I'm glad you asked that question, because it reminded me what I forgot to address. If I could just quickly go, to approve a site plan review, I think your standards do, provide that, you could do that provided you find that it's a suitable development in accordance with the standards that are set out in your protective bylaw. If you look at the driveway standard, you'll see that driveways are supposed to be setback. The setback on driveways is different, depending upon the zone that you're in, but from a wall or a structure, it's five feet, and I would submit to you that in the spirit of things, this fence would be like a wall or a structure, and to have my client being, operating his motor vehicle within six inches of it, which was satisfactory to him and had helped him mitigate the detriment that the project was doing to his commercial area, doing that right up on the property line would, would be a great imposition on it. We think about all the things that we do with our motor vehicles, we get, we drive our cars up and down the driveway, we're never perfect in their operation, we have snow, we have ice we need to remove from our driveways, we may have, in a commercial context, moving items back and forth from the street towards the back of the property, which is what he has specifically complained about to me, which may require that additional maneuverability that he'd simply lose on that six-inch, which sounds so small, I think, when we look at it, but from his perspective, it's quite a bit. So, if we look at this from a site plan review standard alone, despite everything in my opening comments, you would be well in your, you would be exercising wisdom in denying the application for the modification, because it does fail to meet your design series. You're taking one shared driveway, and in essence, you're creating two driveways, and you're constructing a wall there in the center. If we were just to call it a side yard setback, if that's what we were going to do, that, that setback is. And you'd be more familiar with the zone than I am, I just recently picked up the file.
I believe they proposed the one.
It's five to 15, depending upon the zone that you're in, and so even as a side yard setback for a driveway, you just simply don't have the room to start moving the fence even closer to, to my clients, but I appreciate you accepting my remarks. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, I hope I answered your question, sir.
You did, thank you.
Thank you. Just to conclude then, I think a simple denial discharges the function and responsibility of the board, and then we could take the property dispute and continue to work on it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything further from the public, any more public comment? Do you have a comment, Dave?
Yeah, I, I don't see how we.
Well, Adam, what's your opinion, how can we proceed on this? Well, I don't see an easement recorded anywhere on Mr. Piermarini's property.
Oh.
So, it appears that the easement is just the nine feet within the 234 Summer Street driveway portion, so it goes from the property line, nine feet in, to five, six inches from the front of the building, and about nine inches from the rear of the building, per the, what you have, I was just looking at the registry website, back and forth, and Mr. Piermarini's deed is recorded in 1992, the easement was recorded in 1994, so.
Okay.
If, if the easement were recorded against his property, it would be showing in conjunction, so there's a singular easement, it doesn't extend on both sides.
Okay.
I think the confusion is the driveway has extended on both sides.
Yeah.
And has, for much of the life of the two structures as commercial structures, was generally shared in common, and wasn't, you know, this is my side, this is your side, stay off, and I think that, if I recall, part of the discussion when this project came for its original site plan approval, Mr. Piermarini was concerned about the conflict now between a potential commercial or other enterprise and a residential use, and insurance implications and other things, and the fence was a protective measure for, for both parties, he requested it as, you know, he was the abutter. You know, as far as the, putting it within the easement, you know, I, I'm not going to say, you know, let, you know, National Grid, forget them, let's just make them put it in, because that's, you know, that's an issue. I also understand the, the six-inch bit can, can be problematic, I mean, that's, that's your side view mirror, and, you know, when it's tight, that can be an expensive proposition if you're, you're off by a little bit.
I have a question for the abutter, if you don't mind, so, are you aware of an easement on your property?
I wasn't, and I've been struggling to look at the plans again, and I haven't seen it, and I would, my client is telling me he's, he doesn't believe that it's on there, and, and I take a gentleman's remarks as to his research from the registry of deeds is at least informative for tonight's purposes, that there isn't one.
And how far from your building to the lot line, is it at the shortest point?
Did you get that dimension, sir? From your building to the? To the?
Lot line.
Lot line, I think.
Because his house is 10.1 feet, and yours looks close, but probably a little bigger.
Closer.
Try to use the scale on this plan to give us a good idea.
And unfortunately, it's not scale.
Oh, this, oh, this plan is the one I have.
Well, it's not going to be the scale, because it's a reduced copy.
Oh.
There is a bar scale, you can try it.
It looks almost the same.
It looks a little greater, doesn't it?
Maybe you hear bigger, maybe you hear longer, like 11 feet of them.
I've got a few comments on that.
I've got fat fingers.
Matthew has some comments.
It's the fat fingers more than anything.
Since we've dealt with the gas company in Bolton, with the 40B development, we had to pave back and forth over their right of way and install some things, they, they are amenable, it's not cheap, and it's not easy, but they are amenable to physically locating the pipe and allowing certain things within certain areas. Also, in this letter from National Grid, it specifically says, though.
Also, in this letter from National Grid, it specifically says, "Within a ten-foot wide easement area," the letter says ten-foot wide.
Right.
And looking at the plan that's attached to that, it's showing a proposed nine-foot wide utility easement, both of which are entirely upon the applicant's property. Also, I clearly remember this as being almost derogatory to our zoning, and if anything, then I would suggest that they've created their own hardship. They're surrounded on both sides by commercial, and there was another existing resident across the street. But I feel that the abutter's concern is appropriate because it's not necessarily going to stay within the current owners forever, and whoever moves in is going to expect a home that has some separation from a business next door, but it's in a commercial zone. So I'm inclined to say that, no, you're going to have to do whatever the permit says. And I feel, it is an existing shared driveway, and it's been that way since ninety, ninety-two?
Well, Mr. Piremarini's deed dates to 1992, the easement dates to 1994. I think anecdotally, from conversations with Mr. Piremarini and others, that, I mean, that shared driveway probably dates back to the sixties, if not somewhat earlier.
So that's providing access to both properties?
Right.
I mean, all right here is wide open, it's all paved.
It appears from the GIS, the buildings, and again, this is a very rudimentary tool, but it appears the buildings are approximately twenty-one feet apart. And it's clearly off because if you scale it using the, again, the limited tools on this, the buildings are drawn from aerial photography, the 234 building scales off at about thirteen and a half feet from the property line. So one can infer that if we have a survey that says it's ten feet and, you know, we're estimating about twenty-one feet, there's probably about ten feet, give or take, you know, an inch here, an inch there, on each side of that property line. It's roughly equivalent, the paving on either side.
Well, going from the previously referenced David D. Ross Site Plan dated March 2016, they show the easement line, they show the gas line within the easement line, but they do not specify easement.
Was that in your file, Matthew?
I'm sorry?
That map, was that in your file?
Yeah, that's in the town, the public hearing announcement, the staple piece, it's at the very back, it's a Z-fold. So that, yeah, should be, there you go.
Thanks.
Yes. So, and as was stated, the property owner had a financial gain by granting the easement. The gas line is not shown going to the back property line, I don't know why, but... And the limit of pavement existing is very clear. So for... Ninety-two, so for twenty-plus years, shared driveway use, to put a fence down in the middle of it was probably not favorable for either party, but was an amicable solution. So, I mean, this gets back to the unintended consequences, I think. You know, we, this project has been allowed to be a residential use in a commercially zoned area, both of them need some sort of a separation. My understanding of a fence was it could be on the property line if it was up six feet, and anything taller than six feet had to be setback as tall as the structure.
No, that would be a ten-foot fence. Once you hit ten feet, you need a building permit, you need a, it's considered a structure and needs to meet setbacks. Eight feet requires a building permit, but does not require setbacks.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, and that definitely came up at the heat.
Yes, so, yes.
So, before we get the Unitil letter, I really, due to the discussions at the last public hearing, our decision was basically that it could be put on the line, however, the plans that were submitted with the fence detail reflected a six-inch offset. So for me, I really didn't have an issue with it being on the line as long as it did not cross over, because if there was any concern from the abutter that they were going to damage that fence, they could put up their own fence on the line and mitigate that. As far as the need for the fence, I don't think that the abutter's fears were irrational. I think he has substantiated that, I mean, it's wide open, so kids on bikes could go right into it, whatever it could be. I think it adds separation. I'm not sure, through the National Grid letter, which was received back in May, what their definition of a permanent structure is, because, I mean, I'm just trying to think outside the box, but if you could put some planters and mount the fence in the planters so they could be removed to access the easement without it being a permanent structure, what I'd like to see is more clarification from National Grid as to what they may or may not allow.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe have them seek some relief from this letter through them, because it is going to be, if the easement is only nine feet, they're going to be literally six inches into the easement from side to side. And if they're unwilling to, if National Grid's unwilling to just say, no, you can't put anything there, I'm not really satisfied with leaving the abutter in the lurch just because it wasn't identified earlier. If we had known during the original public hearing process, we, I mean, I would have addressed it then, but, and again, I think it was due to the fact that we knew that it was going to be tight for that driveway, we discussed it at length. I tend to feel the same way, that's somewhat of a self-imposed burden, I mean...
Yeah, I get that sense, too. My question is, what are our options as a board? I know none of them are good.
I think that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Well, you could deny it and say, we're not going to allow the modification, we approved it as it was, you went forward and didn't contest it. You could give them the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice, to go back and approach National Grid and see if there's a way for them to construct it as it's designed, or in a way that constructs it within their property, you know, six inches off the property line, and that would allow them to come back without the substantial, excuse me, substantially different determination under Section 16, which is probably the best option as it stands right now. They, you could allow them to withdraw, they could go back to the zoning board and try to modify their special permit to remove the fence. I think that it's been made clear by Mr. Piremarini through the entire time that that's not something he is in favor of, and his representative tonight has indicated that they feel the zoning board did so as a protection to not cause, you know, injurious conditions. So, you know, I don't know what the likelihood of that being successful is. You know, in theory, Mr. Piremarini could say, you know what, I don't really go back there that often, I would be willing to allow you to install it on my property, they could work it out amongst property owners in whatever manner they felt was appropriate, that would be, you know, a private negotiation between two landowners. Again, I don't know that that's necessarily something that is in the cards or something that would be successful. Honestly, I think that the best solution isn't really a solution, it's, you don't have enough information. You could even say, we're willing to continue this and give them a fixed period of time with which to continue, to try and get some answers and come back. That keeps the hearing open, you continue it to a date certain, at that time, all of those other options are still open to you.
That's what I was thinking, I was hoping that you would say, that we could continue it and get more information, because I think that we don't have enough information from, especially from National Grid, as to what, you know, what is possible on that, what are your definitions of, you know? You obviously made a determination, someone made a determination, the Gas Operations Group to oppose the construction of the fence. Why?
Well, and, you know, I think, from my experience, I'll sort of echo what Matthew said, lawyers, the railroad, utilities, their standard answer is no, when you ask a question. Can I do this? They often say no, because it's the simplest thing to say.
Sure.
And it's the most protective thing, it's conservative. The more information you give them, the more you work with them and try and meet their needs, the more likely they are to say, okay, here's the ten-foot barrier you have to jump over for me to let you do that. So potentially, there is a way, and, you know, you've identified that it's been done in other places. I don't know what the expense would be, I don't know what the timing would be, but again, that's not necessarily the consideration that you need to take into account at this point.
Mm-hmm. So another, so just so I'm clear, the other option would be to deny it and let it be a dispute between neighbors, and they go back and figure out what they want to do.
Well, you know, if you were to deny it, that I think it presents another series of problems. It eliminates the ability to occupy the structure because...
Because of the special permit.
Well, the fence requi, the special permit requires the fence, the site plan requires the fence, occupancy is required, occupancy requires both of those items to be satisfied for the building inspector to sign off as a condition of zoning. You know, their withdrawal would do the same thing as a continuance, it would just require them to refile and re-advertise. So, you know, that sort of takes it off the table, but it does so in, you know, it, I don't want to say it puts another burden on them, but it requires them to pay for more advertising and notice, whereas the continuance, you know, moves the process along to a date certain. I mean, I think there's really only two parties currently interested in this project, so we're not requiring more and more people to come out on a regular basis, and I would imagine that, you know, this is something that would take, you know, several weeks or more to sort out with the Gas Company.
Okay. Is it paved right up to Mr. Piremarini's?
I believe it's paved building to building, as my recollection is. I mean, if there isn't paving, it's like six or eight inches along each foundation wall, but it's not, it's not a strip with some large landscaped area on either side.
Yeah, it's all pavement, basically, between the buildings for the most part. They did, and it's old.
Yeah.
And they did, I think, round some of it just for construction purposes or whatever.
This plan shows there being space, it shows contours that are graded away from the building towards the driveway, so it looks like at least a five-foot strip between the edge of pavement and Piremarini's building.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you're right, I apologize, that is...
That's all right, but it, I think it's regat, irregular.
And it's one of those things where you, if you drive by, you don't notice that strip.
But, I mean, what I'm saying is, is there a compromise to be had in, you know, maybe expanding the driveway a little bit with some pavement on his side to take up for the six inches that he's going to give up with the fence location?
I can't answer that question.
You know what I'm saying? Is there a compromise to be had there? A little bit of paving to get it a little closer to what everyone was expecting. Just an idea.
I would like to suggest an alternative, to ask them to withdraw and to provide a letter to the Gas Company from the planning board requesting that they work with the applicant to provide something and not waste this board's time, and not say no, and not upset anybody, but let the further investigation be undertaken by the applicant. That would be my recommendation.
Would you like to say something else?
I want to apologize because, as I said, I just recently picked up the file here. Mr. Piremarini had given me this letter, he wanted us to all be aware of it. So I have a letter, it's dated June 27, 2017. It's from National Grid, written by Sarah Fottlen-Lenger. Not good with names, so I'll do the best I can with that one. Sarah has indicated here that I have been informed by your manager, by my manager, that you installing a fence at the ten-foot mark of the gas line that runs to 234 Summer Street in Lunenburg should not be an issue, as there is already a temporary fence there. What my client is saying to me is that there was a temporary construction fence that was up there, and at that same mark, if we had put the regular fence there, that... So I showed that to your petitioner gentleman over here, and he obviously saw that as the ten-foot mark is okay, which brings him to the property line, so we continue to dispute that additional. So I would certainly acknowledge the gentleman's suggestion to motion for leave to withdraw. Please allow me, and I'll make a little investigation with Unitil to try to get a really quantifiable dimension as to where they would approve that fence. And if it be somewhere between that nine-foot strip, as Mr. Piremarini has pointed out to me again, that there really is a nine-foot strip that's from the building to the, to nine feet, and there is a whole foot there of accessway. I think that if we can find that, I think this board, I would hope that this board would be comfortable in actually denying a modification, but understanding that they can put their fence up there, and the special permit is now, I guess, for lack of a better word, we'd be void because we couldn't comply with the full conditions. And, you know, it'd be frustrating for everybody involved, including the applicant, because he surely wants to get his project moving forward, too. So I would definitely just call your attention to that, and I apologize for not surprising you of that earlier, Mr. Chairman, and to your board members, and ask that you give the leave to withdraw.
Thank you, that was helpful.
I'm willing to put the fence on a ten-foot mark, like that said, so I'll put that fence up anytime you guys want.
Okay.
We've got all this behind us, we're wasting everybody's time here, blaming it over a fence.
Okay.
I'm just curious, why is putting the fence up at the ten-foot mark even a concern? Because that's what the original ruling was on the property line.
The only thing that threw a wrench in the works for me was the letter from Unitil that, and then we...
National Grid.
Or National Grid, that we couldn't put it on there. If they're fine with the fence, I have no issue.
Yeah, if National Grid is okay with it on the property line, which is the ten-foot mark, and the...
National Grid is nine feet, so I could put it on my property line, it won't disturb from the gas line. They own nine feet of that easement, they bought that. I am willing to put the fence on the property line.
Could we condition it upon approval from National Grid that the fence is okay? Make a decision tonight?
Well, I think...
I'm sorry to interrupt again, did they do submit that letter to Marjorie for the record, or could you, a copy, so that, do you have a copy?
I'm saying, if National Grid is okay with it going on the property line, which is what they're calling the ten-foot mark, our ruling, I mean, unfortunately, I wasn't here for this vote, but our ruling, as you guys voted on it, was to put it on the property line. So those two statements would be in agreement, which would nullify the need to change anything.
Correct.
And it would still be within the special permit.
Right, as long as National Grid has no...
Yeah, well, according to this, according to this letter, National Grid is okay with it at the ten-foot mark, which is where the construction fence was. And what he's requesting is that he put it at the ten-foot mark, which was on the property line, as opposed to six inches onto the easement. And I don't know where the six inches onto the easement came from, because it's not in the site plan approval.
It's graphically shown on the plan.
That's where it comes from. It says it shall be built to the plan, and the plan shows the fence located not on the property line.
That was clerk Cleaver from the engineer.
As long as we can substantiate, for me personally, as long as we can substantiate that we can allow them to put their fence on the line per National...
Oh, because the dots are, so the wording, the wording of the ruling says it's on the property line, but the drawing shows it a box nearly six inches of.
Reflect the fence details that came back six inches off. So we made the approval of on the line, but the plan itself reflects a six-inch difference.
I see.
And I did watch, and we did have discussion on that.
Yeah.
And said whether it should go on the line, and for me, it means the plane of the line is whatever the closest point is on the line. So you're going to have a two, two and a half inch gap, or whatever, you'll be on the width of a fence post on your property, is what my...
It don't mean on the center, it means...
You have to stay on your side, any, so it's a plane, like a piece of paper, so if you have a post...
Like in football?
The closest part that's going to go to the property is going to be the post. So if you cross that plane at all with anything, that's on... So if you cross that plane at all with anything, that's on his property. So your posts all have to be up against that property line plane. So you'll be, I mean, your fence itself will be a couple inches.
Also, that I have to try, and I have to stand to turn and...
Right, but you can't put something on someone else's property.
He just tried to put the fence on our property. He just tried to put in the fence on our property six inches.
I'm saying as long as it doesn't cross that plane onto his property, I have no problem...
If you want to put it on my property, I'm happy with that.
You can't put the posts in the middle of the line.
Oh, definitely.
You have to put them off to one side. And that's, that's what I'm hearing you saying, but I'm saying anything that goes onto his property, in my opinion, can't, shouldn't, and can't happen, we can't prove that because it's not your property. So for me, as long as National Grid does not have an issue, and I know their fence stayed at the construction fence, but the construction fence wasn't sunk in the ground, so I'm assuming that they're aware that the new fence will be sunk in the ground, but I'd just like to make sure that that's clear. Because I don't want to... Sure.
So again, so we look at a plan, it says six inches. You're, you're doing a site plan on a special permit that dealt with mitigating a injurious new condition or expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming condition. It received the required statutory finding because the zoning board felt that this mitigated the concern for your abutter to the property. Moving that six inches, again, it just creates a new injurious condition. Moving that fence six inches encroaches right on to his driveway that gives him all of those problems and concerns that, that he's objecting to, in part because of the proposed special permit that they've already granted.
Through the chair? So what we've just said, though, is that it will remain on their property line. We cannot force them, I don't, I don't believe, to move it even further into their property line. It's on their property line, it's on their property line. And that, this whole thing started as a mitigating...
Well, the approved plan has it six inches off the property line. That's what happened.
That's correct.
Verbally, our discussion said on the line. When we got the detail for the fence, it reflected it being six inches off the line. So they're coming back and saying, we want it on the exact...
What was the ZBA language? The ZBA language said six inches or on the property line?
Well, again, I think the ZBA just specified a fence, and we worked out the details.
Because I don't remember any, I mean, I was at the first meeting, and I don't recall any testimony about the six inches. So is that something that solely came up at the second meeting? Or is it purely an artifact of the way it was drawn?
The six inches never came up. It only came up because when they submitted the details, it was, we didn't notice it was, we, I thought it was on the line when I approved the...
Mr. Chairman, may I please? The six inches came up when it was drawn in a plan that was attached and put to the petition of the site plan review that was reviewed by your abutters. Perhaps if there was a plan, Mr. Chairman, that had the fence immediately on the property line, then that would have came up. But again, this is a fence, my client has requested it, but to put it in such a way that it's going to inhibit the operation of this, we're talking, again, this is a very de minimis amount of space, but it is, is quite a bit when we're talking about a historic shared...
Excuse me, sir, just, you have to, all your comment has to come to the board.
A historic shared driveway that's been there. Gentleman has told me, I know the deed is different, but been there since 87 in your town, operating a commercial business there. And zoning board heard his concerns. If they were aware that we are interpreting that condition to change those concerns?
Their condition was for a fence, though, correct?
But to, the way that we're interpreting those conditions is to implicate a new impediment or a new impact that this, that this non-conforming use is putting to that, that area.
And what do you feel that impact will be? By moving it six inches, the increased...
The dimension is unclear. I saw you had the magnifying glass, and I was jealous. So I can certainly defer to anything you were able to discern with the magnifying glass. But the way I saw it, it looks to me to be about 10 feet to the, that covered porch structure and about a full 15 feet to the building. He operates a commercial business there. He's been doing so for decades. He needs to operate motor vehicles in and around his building, needs to do snow and ice removal himself.
Can I ask one question?
Hold on one second.
Name of his business. There's no name, no structure, no business out there.
I'm going to ask you to be quiet, or I'm going to have to ask you to leave. We're addressing your issues, we're doing the best we can, but, all right, just, we need to be able to hear everybody out.
He's got snow and ice removal concerns. He's got, and he has those optimisms, whether it's a factual contest or not as to exactly how he's using his driveway. We take a look at the site plan reviews, the site review says that we can approve a site plan if it meets our design standards. If, if we stop looking at the plans and we start looking at the drive, design standards for what driveways are, it clearly requires setbacks. It clearly requires a five-foot setback from walls or structures, which arguably this fence is, at least in spirit. And it clearly requires larger setbacks for side yards. And while six inches is tall, and he does want this project to move forward, as we begin to put things immediately on the property line, it becomes a problem for him. And he's asking them, asking you to simply be instructed by the bylaw, the protective bylaw, allow the driveway setbacks to inform your decision and to make the decision to deny the application to modify the site plan review.
I have a question.
Hold on, Michael Ray, go first.
I have a, I have a question, comment. So just so I'm clear, if the applicant puts the six inches away from the property line, then they no longer have access to the six inches of their property on the other side of this fence. So in effect, those six inches become the six inches of the abutter.
I think it's...
And so, so I'm hearing you correctly. So what you're looking for is for them to give up essentially six inches of their land so that, because they can't fit within, I'm sure you can, I can't, fit within six inches on the other side of a fence. So you, the applicant essentially would give up six inches of their property, and it would go to the use of the abutter. And you're, and what I'm understanding is that this is how you understood the approval to be.
Sure. I think the logic is appealing, but I think in the, in the final analysis, I would disagree with that. The, the concept of the prop, my property on the other side of my fence can come up from time to time.
Of course.
Typically, it's a swath of land that's sufficient enough to permit maintenance of the fence, so that if you do have a hotly disputed property line dispute, the fence can be maintained at all times. So to a certain degree, the, I would say no for that purpose. And my second, my second issue with that in this particular case is really, we're both giving up. We're both giving up the, the preferred use of a commercial shared driveway. And my, my client has given up that, and he's just simply asking not to have that towering, I think it's an eight-foot structure, overhanging him as he's operating motor vehicles up and down the driveway. That that's simply what he's saying. But I do appreciate that perspective. In essence, yes, I think there's a six-foot strip that turns into, for lack of a better word, no man's land. And, but we could certainly see cases where they would have a three-foot strip there so they could get behind their fence to do, to do maintenance, sir. Thank you.
Who's next?
So Dave so graciously allowed me to borrow his magnifying glass. And on my examination of this plan, the way that it's drawn, is it appears that the fence posts are directly abutting the property line, and then the fence is drawn as a line down with the fence posts, which indicates to me that it was intended to be drawn on the property line, but acknowledging the fact that it's a five-inch diameter fence post, that the outer edge of the fence post would be on the property line, and the inner edge of the fence post would be five-plus inches impeding on the owner's property. So with, with that...
Yeah, it doesn't give a dimension in between the post and the property.
Correct. So there is no dimension from the property line to the post. So as far as my interpretation of this plan, again, there's no written testimony, and there's no documented statement on the plan of any dimension. So my interpretation is the plan says the fence goes on the property line solely on the, the...
Applicant.
Applicant's property, meaning no parts of that fence should go on the neighboring property. Hundred percent of it would be on the applicant's property, but the posts could be right on the property line. That's my interpretation.
May, Mr. Chairman, may I please be recognized? My question to your member would be, is that the current plan that we're looking at, is that the one attached to the petition to modify?
Received from June 16, 16, so I think that's when the initial, this is the approved plan.
Yeah, this is the original, this is the, this is the hearing.
That is the approved plan.
It's approved plan.
May I please have the benefit?
With the spy glass?
I mean, if you go pull the full-size plan, it'd be a lot clearer to see.
Do we have those?
Do you want the glass?
So you see, you see the edge of the posts are abutting the property line.
What does our...
And if you read the text, yeah, read the text that is describing where it's located, there's no indication of an offset from the property line.
If I recall correctly, this came to us...
And the textual document says it's on the property line as well, so the actual textual ruling.
May I inquire? The question that I have is, is it the, I see the, the square, white squares as opposed to the black dots as the, as the fence posts?
Correct.
Yeah, the black dots, I think, are the state...
The existing railroad spikes.
Well, it's remarked now.
Well, they were railroad spikes when this was...
Handy.
I see that as six inches off the, the property line, and I think that that's, that's what the plan is. And, you know, I, I would, I would just bring my, bring myself back to my original remarks. We have a, an injurious condition that's been addressed by a, a fence, and to place the fence in such a way that it creates a second injurious condition, I think really would frustrate the intent and purpose of placing a condition by the zoning board in the first place. And then I would ask you to look at your own standards, your own by, protective bylaws, say you can approve this if you think the design standards have been satisfied. And there is really no way that we can say the design standards have been satisfied on a site plan where the driveway is immediately up to the property line. I think it's almost very difficult. Certainly, there no objection was brought to that at that preliminary hearing or the last hearing, but we certainly would be pressing the objection respectfully, sir. You know, he is looking for, and I, and probably why I wasn't so prepared on the, and I apologize about the whole gas main, I just didn't see that as the issue. I just saw this as a very simple issue of site plan review. The condition of the zoning board is what it is. Stand, design standards should drive our, our decision here, and I look at that driveway standard, and I don't know how we could approve it, so.
Well, if I recall correctly, maybe the board can help me, unless I did not review the video. This came to us, this particular issue, the fence, was a, a give and take between both parties. And the final location, I think, was verbally agreed to, and I thought that we put a condition of our own in.
Black and white, you guys agreed to it, 10 feet.
We agreed to 10 feet.
On the property line.
On the property line, yeah, so...
We had, the fence would have to be on the lot line.
Sorry. Would you mind coming up to the microphone so the people at home can hear?
That's what I recall. That's not to say that, I mean, I always thought that...
The town of Lunenburg, it says at 10 feet wide, the fence would have to be on the lot line or for the property owners to use their driveway on the lot line. It's in black and white right here.
So the style of the fence, you know, I don't know, that's anybody's issue, but I was always taught that, you know, if it's your fence, right, so you put it on your property line, at least the posts are on your line, and then you can put, even if you put a stockade right up to the, you know, across the front of the posts, so you don't even have to, you know what I mean?
Well, just nothing can...
Yeah, it can't go over the border. That's, that's the rule.
Yeah.
That was my recollection that we did...
So to the property line, because it is a condition of the, a special permit...
Is that in the minutes, the 10-foot?
Yeah.
Or is it in the decision?
Was that the decision or the minutes?
That was the decision. But you told me when I come that the, you guys said that it could be on the property line. So in my head, that's what I thought the whole time.
Yeah.
But then when I come into the town, Adam said what was approved on the plan was nine feet. And I said, that's my driveway.
Okay.
So I, that's why I came here, to make sure it's on the line.
It's on the line, yeah.
Because I also have to use this as a driveway.
Yeah.
So...
I thought that they had agreed to that, right down the middle of the line, and that's what I had recalled.
Me too. And that's what I thought in my head the whole time.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to, is that, is that the decision?
No, that's the minutes.
No, these are the minutes, and I think that it says, the fence will begin on the property line, not the street line.
No, that's...
Proximity to the right of way, not the...
All right, so...
But I do remember the discussion at, I mean, I watched both of the meetings.
Should we continue and get some more information? Sounds like...
No, where's that other section? Does it give it to you?
These are both minutes.
They're, they're both minutes.
Minutes and minutes, it says right there. But we do have...
That's what we discussed in the meeting, I remember specifically.
Mr. Chair? So just as a point of question, I guess, if, if there's a proposal for a, if there's a proposal for a change of a site plan approval, and the board determines that there is no change required, because it's our interpretation that what is being asked for was already part of the site plan, what is, is it just withdrawn or it's just withdrawn? A modification that would be not necessary, correct?
Give them the opportunity to withdraw.
Let them withdraw?
I have one more question, but does it matter if it's eight foot or if it's twelve?
That is called out in the plan.
It's called out, eight foot.
That is, that was discussed.
That would be an actual modification.
That's in the details. Well, that's what you agreed to.
We did talk about it.
You did agree to an eight foot.
That's what you applied for, and that's what you got.
Yeah, no, that's what I was told, I have to...
Now, it sounds like the, your neighbor also is not happy about it being eight foot because you're saying this huge eight-foot fence is towering over them, so...
You know, certainly, it's something we could talk about there.
I was going to say, if, if you are amenable to it being reduced to six feet or something like that, and the two agree, then I don't think the board would have any problem with changing the requirement, because the height was set based upon the neighbor's request.
It seems as though their condition, though, is that, that they want this six feet, six inches away. So is that, is that what you're offering as your, as their compromise?
Well, I mean, certainly would be something we could talk about with your applicants. You know, I, I certainly want to meet with him more. I've just met with Mr. Pemery once, so, and get a full sense of exactly what it is that he's looking for.
Okay, so what would we...
I have one question for you. How did you, how did you discover or feel that your fence needed the modification? Why?
She, she came to talk to me, and in scaling it off, it appeared to me that the fence was six inches off the property line.
Okay, right, right. I'm just curious as to how you...
You told me it was a foot off, and I said no, they told me it could be on the line.
Correct. And as I said, we discussed that it could be on the line, and the plans that were submitted show it as offset.
But there's no dimension on the plan that shows an offset.
There is not.
I could take my scale out and measure that for you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'd like to, that's what I, actually, that's what I'd like to do, is continue so they can try and work out something...
I can't move on my house until the fence is up, and I can't put the fence up until we decide if it's on there. So that's the problem.
Well, you did receive the letter in May from Unit, from National Grid.
I wasn't even giving you the Unitil letter. I wasn't going to fight with that, I was just going to put it in the center. The building is that, we don't want to know it. I was just saying, the board said it's in the center, I'm not trying to take this property up. I don't want me to take mine either, because I also use the...
Okay, so just, just to be clear, when we say on the property line, what we are saying is that 100% of the fence is on your property.
Yes, I know.
Okay? So that's what we mean by on the property line, not down the middle of the property So that's what we mean by on the property line, not down the middle of the property line where half of the fence is on your property, half of the fence is on his property.
Right.
Right? Right, no, on the property line means 100% of the fence is on your property, and no part of it goes over his, his line. However, as far as I'm concerned, it can go right up to the property line.
It, it sounds like there's still an issue with National Grid.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like National Grid submitted a letter that said, if the fence is on the property line, as was the construction fence, then they don't have a problem with it.
So that's kind of what...
That's the letter. We don't have that in our package, but that's the letter that he just read into testimony.
Did you request that letter, or did they just send it to you?
I'm sure he made, my client was making an investigation into what the problem was.
So for me, what I would need to see is a letter from National Grid, site-specific and to that fence that's on the plan. And if they have no issue, then I have no issue with it being right on the line.
Could we see that letter?
Absolutely.
Have we not seen this?
Can we get a copy of that for the record?
A copy of it, too?
Is that possible?
Uh, I can give you a copy, sir.
Okay.
Very brief letter.
And it's also, it's also a statement from an employee that says that her superior has told her, so it's, I don't...
Well, that's why I would need confirmation. I want to make sure that the easement doesn't go on to your property.
Should not be an issue, as there's already a temporary fence there.
That they're aware that it's permanent, because the construction fence was, I would not consider a permanent construction because it sat on the top of the pavement, but...
So technically, I get you need to come here because it already was approved to be on the line?
No. You needed to come here because your, Crowley, I assume, is your, your contractor, your developer? Okay, he has, there, we do have record of that letter. National Grid has...
But it says 10-foot, and that is 10-foot.
We don't have that letter.
There's actually a blow-up here of it. I didn't even notice it before, but it says .7 feet and .5 feet off of, I assume, your home. So there's an alternative solution. You can put the fence against your house, and you guys can continue to share the driveway. That, you need to resolve this with National Grid. This is not a planning board issue. The planning board has, has issued a special permit with conditions, and your builder has come up with an issue, and that needs to get worked out outside of this...
I have a question. If I withdraw my thing, I can put the fence up on my property line, and if National Grid has a problem, they can deal with me?
But then you're in, not in compliance with your plan.
You're in legal violation of an easement agreement between your property, the deed that you bought, and the corporation of National Grid, and you're probably not going to do really well with that, but...
That would not be our business, right?
Exactly. It's not, it's not our...
If I withdraw the thing, it's...
So I'll tell you what National Grid's gonna tell you, is that you've got a five-foot square post on that fence that's gonna encroach five feet, five inches, I'm sorry. Five inches into their easement, because it goes right to the property line.
Right.
Your fence cannot go past the property line. National Grid is gonna say, oh, you've got, you've got five inches of a fence post, and, and I didn't even see how deep it is. Their pipes are typically, is it, it's a gas line? National Grid gas line?
Yeah.
18 inches?
No, they're usually 30-ish, but, they usually try to...
How deep was it when you were excavating the foundation? Yeah, that's, I mean...
The existing foundation was there, right?
Yeah.
As far as I can see, the problem that you have is with National Grid.
Right.
Yeah.
But so, but the problem, Adam told me that it wasn't approved for the line, and I thought it was, so was it?
In my, in my opinion, it's approved to go up to the property line.
That's...
About 100% on your approach.
If you're willing to confirm, my, my scaling of it seemed to show that it was, the, the fence panels were about a foot and the posts were about six inches.
Depends if you put, it depends if you put the panels on, well, depends on where you put the panels, on which side of the fence post.
I'd like to look at the tape again, if, if we're gonna continue, because this is, I recall talking about this, and it was...
No, he specifically said...
Right up to the line.
Another guy right on the line.
Yeah. But that meant, that means your side of the line, yeah.
But, because it's also my driveway, he's worried about his, I, I have kids, my daughter's driving this winter. She's, that's tight.
I know, but unfortunately, that's...
Again, that was identified, we discussed, that's all...
I have my point on the 10-foot line, but not nine-foot.
Yeah, well, that's what we're saying, and that is where the line is, on the property line.
And it also sounds like National Grid is more likely to agree to just the width of the fence post and encroaching on it.
Get your letter back?
Going circles all night on this.
I have the photocopy.
We need to take some sort of action.
Take the original for your record, it'll be...
Oh, I think the chairman has it if you want to switch.
Do you have one more statement before we, I mean, I'm not gonna...
So if I withdraw the thing, is, is it already on the line? Tomorrow, I already got this special permit, and the fence is...
So...
I would probably, yes.
So do we, I would say...
Well, Adam's already told us that...
Should, should, I, I think our options are she could withdraw. But we, we do have a, we do have a variability here, that Adam thinks that the intent of the approval was to be six inches on her property. And I think the intent of the approval was to be on the property line. And so we probably should clear that up as a board.
Yeah, three of you guys voted for this. What was your intent when you...
Mine was on the line. I mean, that's, I watched both the meetings.
That's my recollection, but again, I'd have to go back and look at the...
And then, you know, I, in addition to the intent of the voting members, which I think is certainly an important inquiry, you had the notice to the public as to what it is that we, 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 we in the public believe was being voted on. And respectfully, I would tell you for sure, Mr. Pirmiree believed a, a six inches off the line was what was being approved, so. At least that's what he informed me when he came in to meet with me.
Right, but if there was no, if there was no...
The testimony from the board was on the line, so...
Yeah.
You know, say, if there was no six-inch testimony, there's no written documentation about six inches?
There's the drawing. Do we have the decision?
Yeah.
It's in your packet.
It says property line. I, I have a question for you.
It says on the property line.
You've mentioned that you'd like to put in a six-foot-tall fence instead of an eight-foot-tall fence, but your plans call for an eight-foot-tall fence. Would you be willing to compromise with your neighbors to get your six-foot-tall fence at the expense of moving it six inches?
My daughter's driving, and that's my valuable host, I can't go on the line for...
Okay. Are you installing an eight-foot-tall fence tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think my closing remarks are, my client's objection to the project in the first place has just been very clearly articulated to this, this, this board. To have such mixed use in such close proximity to as commercial use, compelling. We have the children, they're gonna start driving.
Six inches off.
Uh, we need the maneuverability. The residential use in this particular aspect is not working with this proposed, whether it's ongoing or not, commercial use that's immediately adjacent. And this driving issue is certainly, you know, obviously, it's important. I don't want it to minimize it, but, but it's just one of those residential type uses that's just not gonna be consistent with what's going on there or what had been historically going on there. So I think if you wanted to clarify, I think we take in the position that the, the first plan, if I can call it the first plan, was interpreted by the town as six inches setback. I think that's my client's interpretation of the plan. Ross, Ross and Associates are the best people that tell us what that drawing says. Of course, they have, I'm sure they're, they're employed by your applicant, so maybe there's a bias, maybe there's not. Is this six inches off the line, or is it not? And then, the issue with National Grid, you know, let them work on that. I mean, if that's, they want to rely on this letter, I don't think this letter, I would not put a lot of stock in that letter. It's not a waiver of a condition of a recorded deed at easement. Uh, that's the second issue. I think it's worth exploring.
We request that our zoning commissioner look at the fence or our review engineer to see if there is a dimension.
Well, I mean, the, the plan is...
I mean, I don't want to...
There's no dimension on the plan.
Okay.
Yep, there is nothing.
To me, that says that, and again, through the discussions at the initial public hearings, and the fact that the ZBA did not put a specific dimension, their requirement was a fence to mitigate the impacts that you would have being in such close proximity. As far as your, the fear of your daughter driving into the fence, it's tight. I mean, you're, you have to have her park in the front.
Buy her a small car.
I would be fearful of it, too. So, but again, it's gotta stay on your property. If she hits it, she hits it, it's not a, right?
Like, I agree with that. I just want it on my line.
Right.
Use my whole property, that's all.
So I appreciate the fact that you are trying to follow the process by filing for the modification that apparently...
Well, I interpreted the plan.
Right.
And if, if the board interprets it differently, you would be the final authority giving instruction back to the commissioner.
Okay, so for me, it, as, reflects it as on the line.
As someone that was not part of this process the first time around, my, this is a little confusing to me, which is why I said at the very beginning, I'm gonna abstain from this vote. It appeared to me as though the fence was not on the property line, but all the language said that it was. So I, I fully understand where, you know, both sides of you guys are coming from. I think that what I looked at did not look like a fence on a property line. That's just not what it seemed to me. But every single thing I've read says property line.
To the best of my recollection, that was, it was a negotiating point to, just to move the process along. The two were here in front of us, and we negotiated the placement of the fence. We renegotiated the placement of the fence, and it should have probably gone into the order at the end, maybe a little bit clearer. But I do recall, and I'd like a cha, a chance to go back and double-check the tape. I recall that discussion taking place and us saying right down the center line. So, in other words, on the property line. I would like a chance to go back and see that, so I would move that we continue to a date certain.
Don't do that, because the fence guy's coming tomorrow.
Well, again, that's not our...
I know.
Concern. We have to make sure that we follow the process.
Well, scaling the plan, it's definitely not a foot, but it's definitely at least six inches on the plan.
Well, and I scaled, I scaled it with the, the panel at about a foot.
Okay.
And then...
To the line, to the post.
Second. A second in your motion.
So much for abstaining.
His motion was for a continuance.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Not a decision.
Yeah, I mean, that's always an option, right? They can withdraw.
You, oh, you have to, you have to agree to the withdrawal.
What, does she need a simple majority or a super majority?
Simple.
So three of five to say.
And then I can just get my fence up on my property.
There's a motion on the table, though.
So, is there any, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but there is a motion on the table, so I'm not, so we're here for this. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? My question, I guess, is what liability would be on the town if they withdrew? Would we have any...
I don't think we have any.
Cause they have any concern, other than, but again, if unit, or, excuse me, National Grid said you can't build the fence.
Withdraw without prejudice?
Now, hold on, we're in this, there's a motion and a second, so we're in discussion.
I mean, liability, you know, you would...
So what would, okay, so if they withdraw, they build their fence tomorrow right on the line.
Mm-hmm.
National Grid comes and says, your fence is no good, you gotta take it down.
It's between them and National Grid.
Yep.
But we're satisfied until it comes down. If it comes down, then they're in violation of...
Correct, then they're in violation of the site plan, there's zoning action that would happen as far as an enforcement. It could affect their occupancy, that kind of stuff.
And...
That's if they withdraw.
And that would not leave the abutter any ability to appeal anything?
Appeal what?
Well, again, if we made a decision tonight on the modification, they would have the ability to appeal.
Well, if he feels...
But if we just say...
Withdraw.
If they withdraw...
And they put the fence up, if the abutter feels injured, he could go to the building commissioner and say, I believe that this is in violation of the approved plan, in violation of zoning.
Which is...
I would like action. If he's unsatisfied with that action, it would go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
He would contest the building inspector's enforcement or lack of enforcement.
Protect his best interests, even if they...
He has avenues, yes.
Which is why I think it's important that we clarify our intent, that it's either on the property line or some number of inches off the property line.
There seems to be a plurality of the board that agrees that it is on the property line.
I, I firmly believe it's on the property line.
I don't.
I thought that's what the intent of the board was.
You do not, Matt?
I do not.
That's what the intent of the zoning was.
If it was on the line, it would have been drawn on the line.
I disagree. My, my, well, so I didn't check the approved plans after we approved them until that line. But my thought is that it was on the line, that was what was agreed to. So, so we do have a motion on the table for a continuance to a date certain and a second. Can we accept it?
And we also have, we also have an applicant that's looking to withdraw.
You need to vote on that, or you would have it withdrawn?
Cancel the, cancel the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
I'm not making another one, so someone else can...
No, they, they would have to request a withdrawal, correct?
The applicant has the ability to request to withdraw of their application.
If I withdraw it, I can put my fence up tomorrow on my property line?
That's your...
That's up to you.
That's your choice.
But you're rolling the dice if he appeals to the building inspector, and he says it's gotta come down, it's gotta come down, and then you have to come back because you're not in compliance with your plan. And you might risk losing your occupancy permit.
Not only that, you've...
You'd rather have a fence or an occupancy permit?
May I respectfully...
I want the fence up because he wants the fence, but he's crying, he don't want it on his property.
Nobody puts a fence up on, inside six inches of your property. Nobody does that. So I gotta pay tax on six inches by 130 feet and not use my property?
Okay, well...
You're gonna pay tax on 40 feet of fence that you can't use, too?
Most people have to pay taxes on much more than that. Oh, I understand that, I was saying... I'm saying as far as your fence usually would be much further back from your line.
You're requesting to withdraw your...
Yeah, I'm requesting to withdraw.
Application?
Before a motion, may I address that?
I was misinformed.
That may...
Hold on, have this...
I'm sorry. That might be the most expensive and time-consuming option that we have, while initially attractive, because it seems that it might bring them out to a conclusion and really limit the abutter's opportunity to appeal. The gentleman spoke pretty clearly about what his avenue would be, seeking enforcement of a plan that you already have in front of you, which is six, six inches. And, you know, that, that's the plan. And the, the appeal to the zoning board would hold up the project even longer. And then, if we're dissatisfied there, the gentleman would also have the right to continue the appeal. So I just go back to our, you know, the plan that's been approved, despite all of the language, is incorporated into your decision. It's, 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 I'm gonna use my friend, Mr. Allison's review of that, it's, it's, it's at least six inches. When I look at that, I, I didn't see what our friends at the end of the table here saw, but we can all, I guess we can all look at a plan and see something a little differently, especially when it's such minutia. But that's what the plan is, and, and I think that you could, even if you were to approve it, or if you were to clarify your remarks, I think my, my client would definitely have the, the site plan review can be approved if you're satisfied it meets your design standards. This site plan can never meet the design standards of a driveway. Cannot meet them. It will, that is the simple, easy standard that's clearly going to be the erroneous decision. Again, I bring myself right back to, the only path here is to deny the applicant's request to move the fence. Otherwise, I, I, I just don't see a positive result in the outcome.
But it was, it was already said that we could put it on the property line. This is just a miscommunication.
I guess, at this point, we kind of need to do something. I take a straw poll as to who, in whose opinion was, is it, the plan reflect what was agreed to in our decision? That it is on the line.
Can you clarify?
Okay.
I mean, I just...
It is on the line, I mean, if...
Mr. Chair, if I can be recognized, one, 30 seconds. The appropriate inquiry is, what does the plan that's incorporating your decision provide for? That's the inquiry. It's, it's, the, that's the decision that's been made, that's the site plan that's been approved. It's not, you did, when we talked about or brokered a deal, was it on the line or not on the line? Ross Associates was hired by your applicants, they drew a plan. The plan says, at least according to my, my friend, Mr. Allison here, six, at least six inches. According to our administrator here, it's six inches. That's what the plan is. To move it would violate the standard that you need to find to modify a site plan, which is it complies with your design standards. And there's, again, I think we all agree, there's no way that any of these driveways comply with the design standards. That's in your, that's in your protective bylaw. Thank you. I'll, I'll let you handle it from here, thank you. Thank you.
The best I can do is what I've done, I'm gonna say it already, I'd like to see the tape, so. It's the best I can give you.
Honestly, I, I have to agree that, I mean, I, I'd like to give you the opportunity so we can come to a full decision, an informed decision for all of us. I don't wanna have two people questioning it and three people taking...
Because with all, with all due respect, I think that, I know Adam did his best, but I think that the true interpretation of the language, you have to go back and look at the tape and say, "This is what the interpretation of that language was when we drew it up." That it was on the line, yeah? To the plan, to us, meant on the line. The only way we can do that is to go back and look at the tape and say, "Is that what everybody seemed to understand?"
So, all right, so for me, the benefit of finding clarification is that if it is determined that your plan is correct and that it is on the line, then you're in compliance with your plan and you don't need a modification. Is that correct, Adam?
With, if you find that it's...
If we define, find that the plan reflects that the posts are on the line.
If that's, if that's your interpretation, then we would pass that along to the building inspector.
Okay.
Now, will she be entitled to her money back?
So, what you're, hold on, sorry. What you're saying, Dave, is you need more time to determine.
I do, and I'll tell you why. I think this reflects poorly on us. I think this shows some kind of a miscommunication between us and whoever wrote this up, you know, the final draft that came through and we all signed off on it. I think that there's a danger of that occurring, and that's a problem for me. Okay? Regardless of how it turns out for either one of these particular landowners, if that's the problem, if it's something that we did, I'd like to know about it. If it's, if it's just a matter of interpretation, that one side is choosing to interpret it their way and the other side's trying to, that's their problem.
Independent of this public hearing, can we not follow up on clarification of this plan?
So, you're saying if we approve...
Let's, let's say we, we accept a withdrawal. Can we still have, put on the agenda for our next meeting, a documented clarification of this...
Well, we can do a periodic review of the decision.
Correct. Of this decision to clarify what the intent of the board was with regards to the fence location. And then we have a written document that correlates to...
So, then if they come back and reapply to that...
Well, then, then we can go to the zoning, to the ZBA and give them the clarification of the information.
But then if we find that it isn't on the line, we would require them to come back for a modification, correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, or...
So, they would possibly have to move the fence?
If you find that it's not...
Okay. So, I mean, that's kind of the, I think Ken's approach is probably the smartest and safest for everyone involved.
Yeah, we have to make a rule on one way or the other.
Allow them to withdraw, they can do as they wish is...
But the recommendation would be, don't construct the fence until the decision is made because there's a risk that you may have to move it. All right?
So, what if, so when would you be able to see the video and review it?
Two weeks. I would say we could put it on our agenda for the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
Oh, in two weeks?
Yeah.
I thought I was moving it next week.
It's only been a year.
Pardon me?
He said it's only been a year.
Again, we have to...
So, what should I do? Just withdraw and wait to hear from you?
Withdraw. What do you withdraw?
I don't think I can make suggestions on it. You have to decide.
We have, we have to accept a withdrawal.
I'm not gonna advise you either way, you gotta decide.
I'm withdrawing.
I'm saying the withdrawal would give us the opportunity to revisit. If you install the fence, you might run into some issues and have to move it. If you... So, that's basically...
As a point of order, though, a withdrawal is a request by the applicant. We still have to grant the withdrawal. Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Last...
Every time I say I was gonna, I know. I noticed you have another applicant here on another matter. I talked to my client, there might be something that we can come up with, we've talked about, can we resolve it? Maybe if you just put us on for another call after this applicant, we can, I can take a few minutes and speak with your, these fine folks here.
You could recess the hearing.
Oh, we can recess this? Oh, okay, great.
We'll keep it open, but recess it?
Please.
And due to the, we actually have to open the second one before nine o'clock?
Yep. Motion?
Well, hold on, I just ask, is that, would you like to sit down with them and discuss it, or is it...
You can also access the videos on YouTube in the meantime.
I kind of disagree with being able to make a decision tonight because we've got this letter from National Grid that says they own, they have rights up to the property line. So, in order to install the fence, they are going to have to install it entirely on the abutting property.
Not, unless they can get an agreement.
Unless they can get National Grid to give them an agreement.
There's a letter that says it's fine.
Okay, they've got, they've got two options. They can install it entirely on the abutting property, or they can install it against the house. They cannot install it within the easement, is what this says.
I understand, but you didn't see the letter.
The follow-on letter says they can go with a...
There's a follow-up letter.
The follow-on letter says they can go with a construction fence, so it's...
Okay, well...
I didn't, I didn't see that either.
But again, that's not a definitive letter from...
It's on the 10-foot line.
Right. It's not a definitive, but it was...
It's not a definitive letter, but it's...
But it was solicited from the order.
So, it does sound like they're willing to, you know, there's some communication that needs to happen there, but they're not completely, didn't come back and say, "No way." So...
Mr. Chair, I move that we provide a recess for this hearing.
Can I just withdraw my fence?
It's up to you. You, you can make that request. You have the, your, your neighbor is asking for a few minutes to discuss to see if you guys can come to some conclusion yourselves.
In the context of this public hearing.
This evening.
Right now. Why don't you sit here now, he's asking if you guys can sit down and talk about it.
Would you like to take advantage of that, or do you still wish to just withdraw?
Yeah, after we talk, will we still talk to you?
Yep, come right back.
Absolutely.
And then you can always withdraw then, or we can continue.
Can you hang around for a little while? I know you're tired, but we have, so we're gonna deal with the next people, and then we'll come back to you.
I second the motion for...
I would entertain a motion for, we have a motion and a second to recess. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
How's it long? Conversation about a couple of inches.
Where are we going?
I would suggest that the lobby downstairs would be the best place to...
Yeah, it's like a, sorry, it's like an echo chamber down there. So, if you just, don't wanna disrupt this thing. All right. All right, moving on in our agenda.
Five and nine electric Ave, right?
We have a continuance of five and nine Electric Ave, Asian Imperial Parking Lot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're here tonight as a follow-up to our original hearing on the parking lot plan for Asian Imperial. We have submitted revised plans and a cover letter describing the changes to the plan, as well as a couple turning, vehicle turning movement sketches, and a seating chart also attached to the cover letter. I can quickly run through the highlights of what we changed. The biggest change you'll see on the plan is that we've, well, actually, I'll go through my letter. Existing conditions plan now indicates all of the existing parking striping. Originally, we didn't really show the existing striping, we just threw a number on there. So, the existing conditions plan now shows the parking lot striping. There were, there are currently two accessible parking spaces. The striping in the painting has faded and one of the signs is actually missing. It's my understanding, understanding that one of the signs has been put back out. And then as part of the project, once phase two is coming to completion, we're proposing to seal coat and restripe all of the existing parking. That's not being altered as a part of the, the construction of the parking area. The next item, we deleted phase three, including the proposed addition from the plan. I think we just decided to do that to make your job easier in reviewing and, and drafting up a decision. We had stated in the public hearing, if an addition is in the works down the line, we'll have to come back for site plan approval for that as well. We revised the parking calculations, include only phase one and two, including the seating numbers for the booth tables and counter seats based on the seating chart that was provided and the total amount of seating existing. So, essentially, under the current seating arrangement, there's a total of 36 parking spaces required. The revised plan under phase two calls for 48, uh, phase three, I'm sorry, 48 spaces under phase one and 58 spaces under phase two. So, under the full build-out of phase two, we're looking at 58 spaces. Under the, the current zoning and current seating arrangement, 36 spaces are required. So, we're, no?
57, actually.
Are required?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, because it's the, the tables divided by four and the maximum number of employees at the busiest time, one per...
No, that's only in the village district.
Oh, really?
Right.
It doesn't, so that parking requirement doesn't extend to all those ones?
We haven't altered the existing parking requirements in the other districts. We haven't checked the...
If you do extend the zoning to include the...
If we do fix it, you'd still be compliant by one. So, 'cause that's what it should have been, right?
Well, that's what we talked about.
Based on our new calculations.
What I thought was, was we needed to get all the new definitions and uses together before we started designing parking.
Didn't put any new calculations was the issue, working off the old ones.
We didn't fix the old ones, we just made new ones.
New, new bad ones?
Okay, so the, the, no, the new ones say 57, the old one says 33, right? Gotcha. But regardless, after phase two is in, they'd be compliant with either new or old.
Correct. Worth noting.
Oh, interesting.
The, as I noted, we're proposing to seal coat and restripe the existing parking under phase two. A third accessible parking space has also been added under phase two. I think someone mentioned the number of accessible spaces, and based on the number, we're proposing we do require a third accessible space.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how many were required.
Yep, nope, so that was a good catch, actually. So, under phase two, that would get striped in front of the building as we're showing it on the revised plans. There was a comment, I think Adam raised, and it was reiterated at the meeting regarding proposed trees and the requirement under zoning for coverage with the trees. I've added to, so originally, we were proposing trees on three sides as required in the zoning. I'm not sure if I'm reading the zoning correctly or not, but I've added two additional trees in the, the two islands to provide some additional coverage. So, with the number of parking spaces in that parking area, we would require four trees under 6.4, 3.9, point A. We were, we were providing four trees, and then we've added the two additional. So, we're actually providing six trees under that section. So, we actually have trees on four sides. The trees that are along the west, south, and east side of the parking lot all provide the required spacing of being within 30 feet of a parking space. So, unless I'm reading it wrong, I, I believe I'm covering that section now. To provide a barrier to customers, parking on the landscaped areas along the north end of the building and parking area, large plot of plantings are proposed to be placed along the driveway shown on the plan. So, on the plan, the driveway that goes out to Mass Ave, I know there was an issue with customers parking outside of the pavement. As a solution to prevent that, we're proposing some large planters with plantings. The reason we wanted to do that, at least initially, is so we can, there won't be an issue with plowing. I believe that with all the parking we're providing, I don't think there'll be a tendency for people to wanna park in those areas anymore. I think the planters are sufficient enough to discourage that. And then at the lastly, at the front of the building, we're proposing three parking spaces for takeout customers, so dedicated to people coming and going and not spending a lot of time. Those are the highlights. To answer a couple of questions that came up at the last meeting, we did look at the number of employees at the busiest shift. Currently, they have nine servers, two bartenders, a hostess, and about 12 kitchen staff on their busiest shift. It's worth noting that most of those are carpooled in, they're not parking on the site. Then additionally, we will be submitting to the conservation commission. At a minimum, we'll be doing a request for determination of applicability. We haven't done it yet, we want to get through this process, but that will be forthcoming. The work can't proceed until we do that. During the hearing, there was also a recommendation about the seating capacity and seating chart. We submitted a seating chart. Based on that, we are showing a total of 132 seats. So, there are nine booths in the restaurant, 17 tables, and then in the lounge area, there's a total of 12 counter seats at the bar, and there's four tables in the bar. So, doing the math, there's 104 seats in the restaurant and 28 in the lounge area for a total of 132. I think Adam had mentioned at the last hearing that under the site plan approval, you could actually maybe even revisit the approved seating capacity. As originally approved, there were 116, there was 116 seating capacity. We're asking to look at that and bring it up to what the restaurant currently is, which is 132 seats. So, those were the changes to the plan. I tried to answer the questions that came up during the hearing. I can certainly take any questions. One thing that did come up as a result of the fire chief's comments on turning movements, that's where those, the turning movement diagrams came from. Basically, we routed the, his largest truck through the front parking lot, and then just as a suggestion, he wanted us to look at passenger cars turning into the new parking lot from Electric Ave. So, I did provide something on that, and what Jeff Walsh had commented on was that if we just increased the turning, the radius on the parking, not the parking, the driveway where it meets the existing driveway, we could better that turning movement. And I agreed with Jeff, we have five-foot radius on those now, we could go up to a 10-foot easily with no problem, and you actually get two passenger cars making that movement coming in and out of that driveway. So, that's something we can, we can easily do and be, be happy to provide. The rest of Jeff's comments, we had either addressed previously, or he had no further comment. I think that that turning movement issue was the last thing, number eight, I believe in his letter. Otherwise, everything had been addressed, and we're happy to, to make his recommendation, as I said, so.
And there's no turning in the, where the people were walking up to the upper parking lot, right? There's no, no turning into there anymore, right?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's a set of, they vended a set of stairs.
Yeah, no, there was concern about people backing into that area.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Well, I have two comments.
Sure.
So, well, three, really. The first comment is that I think this is great, that this is a great expansion for our town and for the restaurant. I think this is wonderful. So, my second comment is, for the reserved parking, I wonder if, if it just says reserved instead of like reserved takeout, if that would be adequate for people coming in there?
We were proposing the reserved painting and a sign for, I don't know the exact language, but to indicate they're reserved for takeout customers.
And is, is that sign on all three spaces or just...
It's on all three.
All right. And then the next question was, is there, or I noticed how with the new change, you come in and basically have access to two lots, right? Is there a sign on the second lot that kinda says stop? A stop sign?
No, but we can, I mean, we can certainly write a stop sign.
I would recommend, that's the only recommendation I would make is, you know, I could envision someone coming down the hill, maybe coming into the parking lot, and someone else pulling out, maybe not noticing.
You mean at the bottom of the ramp?
Yes, at the very bottom. Yep. If there would just be a stop sign in that, the upper parking lot, I guess, to tell people...
On the east side, against the back.
Yep, to tell people to stop before they cross over that other lane. And that would be my only recommendation. I think this is great. And did you submit the remaining waiver request for all the waivers we granted?
I don't think there were any others than the couple I had originally asked for.
Yeah. Okay.
If I could just comment, I think it's a nice plan now, too. It really looks great. If I could just comment, I think it's a nice plan now, too, it really looks great. I echo Michael's, Michael Ray's comments about the stop sign, because people do come in there quickly, because they got to get out of the way of the oncoming traffic. So, it would be good if you could control that a little bit better with a stop sign.
Are you intending to do Phase One and Two at the same time, or is this still going to be in phase?
We're showing it as phase. I think the intention is to just build it.
Yeah, just get it done, yeah.
Okay.
Use it while you're building it.
Well, there's still, they still had concerns about what's happening at the end of Phase One, but before Phase Two, like the re-striping and stuff like that. If you do it all as one, then all those concerns would go away.
I think we're contending with do it all at once.
I'm even more concerned now. I mentioned it before, but I didn't realize it was going through two catch basins. Your entire drainage system goes into one catch basin, which then goes into another catch basin, which is mainline coming down Electric Ave. That's not only going to disturb the silt in one, that's going to disturb the silt in both.
The, anything that we're putting in from our drainage, our underground drainage, A has been filtered, so it's been cleaned, and that's all going to those catch basins currently anyway, overland. So, it's all flow that's going there.
I understand that, but you're discharging a six-inch diameter pipe into a four-foot sump catch basin, you're going to stir up the four foot of silt that potentially is there if it hadn't been cleaned, which often happens. And not only one, but two, one double catch basin, which is probably velocity great, because it's on a considerable slope.
It's, normally, we try not to connect catch basins. I think in this instance, that's what's available to us.
I see a drain manhole right there in the landscape.
Well, it's going from, it's going from the chambers to the drain manhole to the catch basin.
Right, the existing system that's there now connects to that catch basin. And we can't, if we were to connect upstream of that catch basin, we'd have to put it through the existing drainage system, which throws the hydrology all off.
Yes.
So, that's why we're connecting where we are, no different than what the existing system does.
So, is that, is that the Walsh review as far as substantially?
He's looked at it all.
He said substantially compliant with storm waters.
I would say he did not disagree with anything I've done.
No, he did say substantially, so, and I'm not disagreeing with you.
Right. No, I don't think Jeff has any issue with how I'm showing the drainage system.
No, you're right, and he did, the review engineer didn't call it out, so, I mean, I just needed to make it known. I'm on Stormwater Task Force, and that's one of the things that we look at.
Okay.
No, no, it looks good.
Yeah. Basically, you've addressed all my comments, I just want to make sure that at the top, where the fence is near the abutters backyard, that is solid fencing?
Yeah.
And on the back edge, it's chain link, just for safety reasons?
Sure.
The planters, are you proposing to remove those in the wintertime, or just move them back, or?
No, I think that the thought there is, I'm showing them three feet off the pavement. If it becomes an issue as they're plowing, they can move them. But I think they can be moved, but the thought is to keep them there. In winter, they're not going to park out there.
My concern is that if you completely move them somewhere, that you're not going to put them back.
Yeah, no, we don't intend on leaving the site completely.
That eliminates my concerns of people parking there. In regards to the existing spotlight, is that going to be removed as part of the, like, when is that going to be removed?
Um.
In the basing, as soon as, I would say after, as soon as.
Parking lot is on, it was a regular parking lot light.
As soon as those are functional.
Yes, we'll make sure the neighbor will be happy, yeah. They'll customers trip, so.
All right, and then, just in regards to the conscom, I know that's not our purview, but on the existing plan, they did have shrubs. There was shrubs proposed in the 30-foot offset to the wetlands, I would assume there's no information. But I would assume that was one of their conditions, so I'm not sure.
I thought they got restored, didn't they, when you did the other plantings?
We're going to have them just come back. We're actually intended to just do the whole thing all over, but then, we've been waiting for this.
But again, if it was a conscom and condition, they say they don't need them anymore, that's fine as well, I just.
If the commission wants to supplant what's been done, then we'll have to do that, so.
I would assume they would have put them there for a reason, I just don't know what that reason was, and I would assume it's still the same, but that would be my only other real concern. And then, just a question for Adam, regards to the snow storage in the state right-of-way, are we allowed to, everybody does it? I'm sure Walmart does it at their.
Which is, I'm sure, what you want to hear your kids say in 10 years. Yeah, right.
And I don't, I just, is there any liability for the town for that? It would be, that would be my, if we approve something that isn't.
I don't even see it on here.
Well, we have, we show snow storage for the proposed parking lot in the green space that's available to us. Coincidentally, the green space for the existing parking lot along Electric Ave is about the same width. You know, unless they're pushing it all the way down to the edge pavement, they're probably, I'm sure some snow falls over, big storms, you know, you get chunks rolling. So, I'm not saying no snow ever makes it into the right-of-way, but I don't think they're intentionally pushing and storing into the right-of-way.
Yeah, my concern would be sightlines and things like that with people accessing, so.
Yeah.
And just in regard to the snow storage near the wetlands, as long as it's kept, I don't see any proposed there, so it's.
And I mean, I guess what I would say to that is, the existing, I would infer that your biggest concern is the right turn out onto Mass Ave.
Right, when you're taking that way.
Which isn't altered under this current plan. So, what they're currently doing has not appeared to pose a problem over time. If you felt it was a concern, you could include a condition that said, "Snow removal shall not impede sightlines," and that would allow you, or the building inspector, or anybody going forward in the future, if it became an issue, to come forth and say, "Okay, this pile's too high, you got to get a loader in here, you got to knock it down." And it's kind of nebulous enough where you're not causing them to, you know, have to truck snow out, or.
Well, that's going to become my second comment, because one of the existing conditions was if they have to remove it off-site. I don't see the need for that, so I'd like to, I guess it would be a question for the board, but how do we address the existing conditions that we don't feel are even needed or?
Oftentimes.
I prefer to just throw them right out and start from scratch, because this is a.
I wouldn't, I would be inclined to believe that it's not in this business's best interest to make their parking lot dangerous, and that that would be something that they would care a lot about, because, you know, customers are coming there and can't get out or having problems that, you know, I think that their business is extremely responsible with how they have operated over the last couple of years, and I know that's up for disagreement, but in terms of like, snow removal.
Business is operating responsibly, the customer is probably not so much.
In terms of snow removal, I think they've been really responsible, from my observations, that this has never been a problem. I don't envision that it would be a problem, so I don't know if we would need to impose any of those kind of restrictions.
I think they're actually picking up snow removal space, so.
Right, right. I'm just saying it's an existing condition, so I think we should just get rid of it.
Yeah, I mean, there's several ways to do it, that this can happen. Oftentimes, boards will carry over all conditions from a previous approval. Sometimes, they'll strike specific ones. They could say, "We're starting to strike the entire set of conditions from the previous approval, and here's our new set of conditions." So, you have some leeway to do it. You know, if they're asking for a modification to include the parking lot, how you move forward with that is, you know, sort of up to the board as a collective.
Right. I have no more comments.
Neither do I. The upper parking, the six and six, Phase One and Phase Two, facing towards the building, have a wood guide rail, but the lower ones, 10 faces facing against the building, are up against a block wall, so you've got, you've got wheel stops against the building, but you're not going to be protecting that block wall from impact?
Typically, no.
Okay.
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary, but it's going to.
Do more damage to your bumper than the wall.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Well, at least it's not visible from the abutter.
How would we deal with the applicant's request for updating the seating limits as well, the same way?
I guess that would depend on how you handle the conditions. If you, if you eliminate the previous conditions, then you can choose to impose new conditions with the seating capacity, or you can choose to say that you're not going to enter into that realm.
We cannot cherry pick. We cannot just.
You can cherry pick, you can, you can change what you want, you can eliminate what you want, you can wipe the whole slate out, you can carry the whole slate over.
Okay.
It's completely up to you.
Do we have a definitive answer on what the building is, as far as fire?
As far as occupancy?
Yeah, do we need to update from, an update from health or a fire?
No, because what happens, well, I mean, health, they permit them annually. They're in there every year, if not every six months, depending on the volume. And the building commissioner and the fire inspector go in there annually to renew the certificate of occupancy, and they do what's called a 110 inspection, which is for places of assembly, and it's required for annual liquor licenses. They give an occupancy number for the building. That is completely devoid of any zoning requirements, any approval this board gives. It's a calculated number through a formula in the building code, based on the type of seating, the type of space, the square footage, the exit requirements. So, her occupancy load could be 350. I don't know that it is, but that wouldn't necessarily mean she can have 350 people in the building per zoning, but per the building code, what she has in there would permit her to have up to that many people in the building.
That accounts for like bar space and.
Correct. If there's, if there's standing space, it's so many square feet a person, if it's fixed seating, it's so many square feet a person, if it's mobile seating, high top is different.
Our calculations are primarily concerned with parking and.
Yeah, I believe the original calculations were a parking control.
Yeah.
And some sort of, you know, grab-on.
Yep, all right.
Honestly, I don't, again, I don't have an issue with, as it sits, if they were going to increase it, I might want to take a second look. Honestly, I think B1 through B9 should be, I think they're labeled as two tops, but I think they're underutilized, four tops, but I don't see any issue with having them at, maybe putting them at three, just.
Well, no, they're requesting that they change them to four.
Yeah.
That's the request.
Oh, they're going to B1 through B9.
Yeah, so the original, the original said they were two, and if we'll rewrite it as, they'll say that they're four.
All the tables are considered four seats under that seating chart.
And that brings us to the new total, the new total count.
So, where do we stand here, what are we looking at? In terms of an approval, how are we going to structure this if we were to structure an approval or?
Well, it's up to the board.
It's an existing plan, so it's.
You can, I mean, there's so many things you can do. It sounds like there's some desire to review the conditions of the existing approval. So, it may be worth taking some time, closing the hearing if you feel you have all the information you need, and deliberating at your next meeting to give everybody the opportunity to review the conditions that you have. I'm not, again, I, you know, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, I don't think that I hear a lot of failure in the plan or a lot of critical comment. It sounds like it's now just how the approval is going to get structured and what's going to be included in it. And, you know, where you have an existing approval with a significant number of conditions that may or may not be desired or need to be altered, I would certainly recommend that you take some time to review those individually and come prepared with thoughts on that.
Well, I have a question. Do you guys want your previous conditions changed?
You know, personally, I don't know them all off the top of my head. It may be. There may be some that might want to go.
No, I just want the permit, so just close the hearing. Get over with.
Accept your, accept your old conditions.
I've spent enough time in here, and I just want to get closed up and move on.
And they got to remove all the snow.
I love to see you all, but I don't want.
Well, you wouldn't have to come back if they were going to just deliberate. It would just be them going over how they want to condition your plan, and I think.
Well, can we not change anything on the existing, just add on, just like?
Well, but I think they're, I think they're actually looking to help you out by getting rid of some of the conditions that.
Conditioned.
It might be worth a review of them, because there may be some that would be worth eliminating, like the chairman's saying there's a condition that all the snow has to be removed.
Seating capacity is 116?
I just don't want to wait anymore. I'm just anxious.
Those are really the two primary ones, so there was no other ones.
I think you could ask the board for a straw poll. I don't think I'm hearing a lot of negative response to your proposal, so I don't think you're in a, I don't think your permit's in jeopardy, I think it's just what kind of additional stuff gets tagged on to the approval.
It would be the amount of time in getting the actual decision letter versus, I think we can close it safely tonight, let them deliberate on the conditions for the decision, then get the decision, we don't have to come back.
Yeah, and it would probably be at the, it would probably be at the next meeting.
You wouldn't be placing your seating capacity, allowing you to not have.
You won't have to put the gate back up either.
So, it sounds like, it sounds like seating capacity, snow removal, and.
The gate.
The gate.
Well, I think.
That was never.
Oh, it's not a condition?
I think these proposed, I think the proposed, what are they called, planters, I think we should put some muffs on them, because during snow removal, I can understand why they'd move them, but maybe they have to be in place from, let's say, April until November or something like that.
Yeah.
There'll be things like that, dark sky compliant lighting, all that stuff, you know, the boilerplate stuff.
They should be placed to prohibit parking, so that it can still accommodate snow, but just so as long as they're less than six feet off of the curb, or, you know, no, more than six feet off of the curb, nobody's going to park their car there.
Are we comfortable discussing this tonight, just looking at her current plan and saying, get rid of the older ones, use the new ones?
If we're going to do that, I'd rather just throw out the whole decision and start.
I haven't seen them, so I couldn't say. I mean, I'd like to review them, you know?
And also, considering at least four of the planters are within the Route 2A right-of-way, is that within our purview to approve permanent anything?
I don't know that they're considered permanent.
Well, there was a discussion about having them locked down or muffed.
Not long, they would have to be there.
They would be in place from April until November. So that when snow comes, they pick them up and remove them if they need to.
I understood, but, I mean, the placement of items on the state right-of-way.
I mean, they have a, they have a use permit from the state?
I mean, I totally see that makes sense. It totally makes sense with the layout, but just given the huge right-of-way that the state has, and we approving a plan that shows items located on the right-of-way.
Well, but they're not permanent structures there.
And my, and my experience with DOT, especially District Three, is, first, well, some of it's that, and if you go to them for an access permit, they say, "That's a great drawing, why don't you come back when the local tells us what they want?"
It's not an access permit, they've, they're not.
I understand, but, I mean, this, this would be part of what would go into the access permit. I mean, it's not a permanent structure, it's, it's within or adjacent to an access that they have permitted through District Three. So, I, and again, I don't, it's not a, it's not anchored into the ground, it's not going to.
Sure.
Does the law say that you can't put anything through, any, I mean, even movable objects? Is, do you know?
It's not their property. It's the right-of-way of the state highway.
But they, okay.
That's why they can't put parking spots there.
Yes, I understand that.
The state allowed us originally to put a driveway through there, so you can put permanent structures. These aren't permanent, you're not prescribing that, we do it unless you make it a new condition, but that's part of the reason we wanted something not permanent, is it can easily be moved if need be. I think, it's, just my opinion, we're providing all this additional parking. I think the planters will discourage habitual bad parkers that, hey, go park in the new parking lot. I think once the traffic pattern's established, if we did have to move them, at that point, I don't think they're going to be necessary, quite honestly.
I mean, if we have to put boulder, like heavy rocks down, we would, we don't want people to park there either. We spent thousands of dollars, you know, buying those stones, and people still leave it there.
So, that's, well, that's a good point, I mean, which, you know, which, would you rather, something, a planter there or cars? You know, so it is discouraging.
With sharp crushed glass.
Yeah. So.
All right.
So.
So, we're looking to close this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
I guess we would continue.
Well, I don't know that there's any more testimony to be closed.
If I could offer, if the, if the board's satisfied with the plans and what's been submitted, I don't think we have any issue with you then deliberating on, you know, what conditions you carry forth from the original conditions. We're not building it this fall, it's going to be spring.
Yeah.
So, you have time to make your decision, and we'd be happy for you to go through and take what you want, take what you don't. So, I wouldn't be opposed to you closing the hearing by any means.
Should I move that we close the public hearing?
Oh.
No, it's a, just a point of order. Aren't you supposed to solicit?
Oh, yes, is there any public comment? Sorry. They're not putting up a fence.
Sorry.
Hearing done.
Is there any erosion control proposed? I realize that it's not flowing into the wetlands, but it.
There is, at the back of the building to protect the wetlands, yes.
Oh, I mean, if you're going to be doing it in the spring, in high water grounds, in the high groundwater?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, there's definitely the need for erosion control, so we're showing it. It'll have to be approved by the Conservation Commission if something more specific is required.
Okay. Well, they're not, their jurisdiction, they can't require anything outside of their jurisdiction.
Well, they can if it impacts their jurisdiction.
If it flows into the state highway, it doesn't, it's not going to impact.
If temporary measures are needed during construction, the contractor absolutely will have to be responsible for that. We do have an erosion sedimentation control plan as part of the package.
Okay.
That really details those requirements, so.
I just wanted to ask.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't see.
There is.
There's a motion and a second.
What was the motion?
There was no second.
Close the public hearing?
The motion was that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion?
If we do that, we can't get input for the capacity from the Fire Chief, or, and I'm just seeing if we need it, I don't know, it might be, it might be 150, it might be 300, I don't know.
Can we condition as long as it doesn't exceed the fire, the capacity per the fire department?
Do you know what your occupancy permit is?
Mine is 116.
No, no. Fire marshal occupancy permit, yeah.
When the building commissioner comes out and...
Yeah, they, they're going to be out within next week or so. They do it every year.
But do you know what the sticker says?
Yeah, I think it's 116.
Is it really 116? Oh. That's really low.
The occupancy permit. Is it 108 or 116? I know it's above 100. It's above 100.
I would be surprised if it was only 116.
I would have thought it'd be closer to 200.
I would say it's over 200. Would be my guess for that kind of...
Are you thinking about the occupancy?
Not, not your permit.
No, when they come out and they do the inspection every year, they give you a placard that says your building occupancy cannot exceed this number.
I see, I know.
Because I guarantee on New Year's Eve, there's more than 116 people.
The night before Thanksgiving.
More takeouts.
Yeah, but you, you probably have about 50 guys back in the kitchen running around.
We don't know. If you allow us to add, we'll add, but this one...
But can we condition it that it doesn't exceed the occupancy per the fire?
You can. I don't, I don't know that you necessarily need to because that's kind of...
The purpose of it.
Yeah, well, that's, I would say that that's understood. You know, they have bigger issues than, than site plan if they exceed the occupancy number per the 110, but...
We have bigger issues than that if we approve a seating capacity.
They probably have a much higher...
That's true. I don't know that you necessarily need to approve a seating capacity. It would, I, I don't see that as something that necessarily...
If they're not extending the building, I mean, I have no issue with what they have. I don't think they're going to be filing in another 20 tables.
Well, so do you, okay.
We could do it per the seating plan.
Seating plan is 132.
No, we just approved the seating plan. That way they can't increase tables. So whatever they gave us for their numbers in their seating plan, let the fire chief decide the actual number.
I would infer that...
I would recommend not to do that. I would, I would, I would think that we would want to approve the capacity, and that gives them the flexibility to change tables and things like that as needed.
I'm not sure we're even, is that within our purview to dictate the seating?
I don't believe that it is.
I'm not sure even there's room to add any more. Can we reach the...
I, I think we should just say that it's now 132.
But again, there are two to the parking calculation. If they separate tables, that's, it's per table parking. So if they make one table, two, they need another parking spot.
And I guess if you're, if you're interested in that number from the fire department and you don't have anything else from the applicant, you can, I mean, I just hate to continue a public hearing that could potentially generate testimony for one item that...
I think it's by seat, not by table.
No, it's by table. One per table.
As a business, they need max...
So the new one is by seat and the old one is by table?
Yes.
Because the new one is every four seats.
Correct. That's only in the village.
The new ones we made are good.
Because there's per bar, I think it's one seat per two seats at the, one spot per two seats at the bar.
We'll get there, Ken.
So you could have a 10-top that only requires one, that's why I say it needs to be changed. A table for 10 that requires one parking spot.
If I could offer on the seating capacity issue, if between tonight and when you deliberate on your conditions at your next meeting, if it's determined that, for some reason, the, the building inspector or the fire department has that 116 number, I think you still have the opportunity to, to base your conditions.
I just don't know if we close the public hearing, whether we can take information from those sources. That's the problem.
So...
I don't think we need to get, I think the seating chart...
I don't think we should approve the seating charts because that limits her flexibility with how she wants to rearrange her restaurant.
Again, I'm not sure we have the...
But that affects the parking calculation, parking, so she separates tables.
Well, it's easy fix, I'll just take...
If she makes four tables, two, she, two, that's...
But if you look at, it's all, it's all individual four tops on the seating chart. She, I would say she's more likely to push tables together than she is to pull them apart.
Yeah, the only, the back corner room, I think, is the only one that has...
It's more like together than separate them.
There's no room to separate them.
Well, I know.
All right. So I, I think that I can provide you guidance that that wouldn't be considered testimony if the number didn't match up what you wanted as part of deliberation. I don't think it's nefarious. I don't think it's intended to change your, your minds.
So it's, it's not testimony, is what you're saying?
I don't believe that, that me providing you with factual information...
I don't think so either.
...would be testimony. It would be a matter of deliberation.
And that's okay? That's allowable?
Because it's a factual, it's, it's factual, it's coming from your staff. It's not part of, you know, convincing you in one direction or the other. It's advising you on the wording of the condition.
Okay.
I mean, that...
If you're happy with that, I'm happy with that.
I don't know that the chair is happy with that.
Oh, I have no...
Fine with it. If that satisfies Matthew, then we can close the hearing.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Still.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we come out of recess? Oh, my God. I thought you said we were done by seven.
Hmm, I don't recall being the instigator of that conversation.
So do I have to make a motion that we come out of recess? Make a motion that we come out of recess for 234 Summer Street?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're back in session for...
234 Summer Street.
234 Summer Street.
So they're, they're saying that if we put it on so they can see the pins, they're fine with it, so...
If it, I'm sorry, so if you install it so that...
They can see our pins on their side.
Your property line markers?
Yeah, so just, they, they resurveyed it last week. There's new, not the railroad spikes, it's brand new aluminum or steel pins, shiny ones.
Iron.
Pardon me?
Are they not iron?
I'm not sure what they are. But anyways, they're shiny, they're easy to see. So you're saying if they install their fence and they can see your, you can see the pins on your side, that will satisfy...
Yes, I want to just make sure it's abundantly clear, so I wrote something, and I, I can read it to you, and maybe we can argue about it, or we can maybe accept my notations towards reflecting perhaps a, a decision, but, so I just want to point out that, that Mr. Pierre Marini is trying to be a good neighbor, and he's trying to be reasonable, and he's listening to their concerns, and obviously, he's, obviously wants to protect his property. There's been a property line dispute there, there's been a removal of pins, there's been asphalt cut, and so he is, wants to protect the property line. So the fence will be constructed upon the westerly property line, I believe that's the line that's in dispute, but not over the line, and all property markers currently placed on the property shall be entirely visible, meaning the whole pin shall be visible from 236 Summer Street period. The fence shall run from the front of the property line to the rear property line. I read the decision, and there's something about 16 feet in front of the house.
Yeah.
So I write it this way, on a parallel line to the front of the house, 16 feet towards the road, there shall be a point in the fence where there'll be a change in the height of the fence. From that point to the road, the fence will be three feet in height. From that point to the rear of the fence, I'm sorry, to the rear of the property, the fence will be eight feet in height. And if that's everyone's understanding how the fence is going to be constructed, I think that's the resolution that Mr. Pierre Marini can...
To the chair, I thought there was some discussion about reducing it to a six-foot.
We were unable to come to terms, so we had an original offer. I had made a suggestion, sir. The conversation lasted about 30 seconds.
Okay, so we're still at eight feet. We're still at eight feet. We're still at eight feet. Okay.
We're at eight feet.
The only comment I have regarding that is that when we had the existing public hearing, because the fence came in eight-foot sections, they had said that the first two would be at the reduced...
Yes, the 16 feet.
He's saying that. He said that.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that they had, they don't have to be cutting sections.
First two. Right here has to be, the first 16 feet has to be three feet.
Right, right, and then you have this eight-foot section that rises up to the eight feet? Okay, and that's just, I want to make sure, I want to make sure everybody's visualizing it the same way.
I'm glad you, Mr. Chairman, I'm so glad you clarified that because that was not my understanding. So what you're saying is, from the road, the first 16 feet is going to be, excuse me, I'm speaking.
Hold on, hold on. Let's let...
Mr. Chairman, first 16 feet from the road toward the, toward the rear property will be three feet.
Right, and then there will be one eight-foot section that...
Since it has to go way to the road, I thought it...
Has to go to the property line. So the, when they use the word road, they're talking the right-of-way, which on Summer Street is like a, like a, like a tarmac at an airport. From the white line, I don't, I believe the right-of-way on Summer Street is 80 feet wide. If it's...
They're going to be doing pavement next year, and I don't want to put the fence too close because if they're making a, 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 a road right here, service road.
Well, there, it would be from your property line, which when your surveyor came out, there should be a pin at the corner of your property line, and that should be where the fence starts.
Pin?
Correct. And it would follow that property line all the way to the rear.
The discussion was for turning radiuses, oh, not, I mean, not turning radiuses, sightlines. So, yeah, so you could see over that, that piece of fence while you were driving and pulling into your driveways respectively.
And, and also, you don't want to have the verbiage that goes to the back property line because the original fence stopped at the grade break? There's a considerable drop-off before you get to the edge of your property?
Yeah, do I have to go down the hill?
That's not what the plan shows. The plan shows it stopping at the grade break.
Okay.
Right.
Because that's, I don't think going down, I'm just going to the end.
So, that's...
It sounds as though we should approve there with her request to withdraw, she withdraws, and that they've worked this out amongst themselves.
Pretty much, yeah. You're still going to be, you're still going to be subject to litigation or reprisal from the...
That's between, she seems willing to...
She can take your chances with that.
I want to remind you that that's likely going to come up.
Not through us, through them.
No, nothing to do with us.
So the first 16 feet is three feet?
Correct, yes.
The rest of the fence until the grade break...
Yes.
Is going to be eight feet.
Well, after the first 16, there should be one section that...
Yes, sir.
A transition section.
Transition piece from 16.
That's another discrepancy.
16 feet to a transition piece to an eight-foot piece, to an eight-foot section, and then the rest will be tran, and is there a way that we can quantify that grade break?
Has it shown on the approved plan?
That would be what I would suggest.
It's right here.
As shown on the approved plan.
You can see where the last post is, and then there's the marker in the back that...
There's a significant drop-off in the, in the topography.
And the eight-foot, thanks for letting me, just give me a second. To the grade break. As long as your decision can make it abundantly clear, we want to have the entire, I don't want to have, well, you can see a little piece of it, because then that would say to my client that that's on the line. We want to make sure the entire pin is visible. That would be the primary objective. If we could ensure that the decision is written clearly that way, we would appreciate it.
I'm not sure we are writing a decision, right?
Yeah, no.
This is, it sounds like an agreement between the two of you guys.
Yeah, we were accepting, I thought we were accepting...
We're accepting a withdrawal. It's a decision between you guys.
Okay. I'm going to write something up and have everyone sign something tonight. Thank you.
So can we withdraw the motion?
You can request. Are you requesting a withdrawal?
I move that we accept a withdrawal.
Second, without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we've had plenty.
All in paper?
Upstain.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Should linger a little bit to sign this paper with them, though.
All right, moving on. We still got half an agenda to go.
Mr. Chair.
And I got the building, there's some mess to the fence, so it opens the garden, they rarely come out tomorrow like they said. They'll go out with the pins so they can see them. Is the building inspector here?
Pardon me?
Well, the building inspector...
It's got nothing to do with us, it's up to him. We let you withdraw your permit, you're free to do as you please.
Oh, okay.
Well, you, you're, you're signing an agreement with your neighbor. There's been an agreement, but...
Have this done that? Sure, no worries.
I don't have to do anything, it's not up to us.
I agree too, I'm going to do it.
Without a signed agreement, I don't know what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The appointment we have for number five, we do have an engineer waiting to represent that, so I may suggest we take that prior to the other, other item.
Certainly.
Thank you so much.
Don't want to waste the used table and definitions.
I'm not doing that.
I've spent more time with Rob than my wife in the office.
Good evening, once again.
You're a busy guy.
You don't know the half of it. The reason I am here tonight, I submitted a letter with a driveway plan. This property is at 221 Goodrich Street. It was a project we'd been in last year, the year before, for an A and R plan that was approved. The intention all along has been, there's a long driveway to the house in the rear of the property, to use that driveway as a shared driveway. The lot has a lot of topography. From Goodrich Street, it goes, goes up. So, the existing driveway, you can see, is the, the longer gray driveway, the lighter gray. We're proposing a house on Lot four, or Lot five, rather. Proposing to share the access on that existing driveway. We come in, basically, so the driveway plan, for the first, from the, from Goodrich Street, up to about two hundred feet up the driveway, is under twelve percent. Beyond that, from two hundred to three hundred and sixty-nine, or call it three hundred and fifty feet, it does exceed twelve percent, the existing driveway. It ranges from twelve up to fifteen point two percent roughly. Reason we're asking to use that as a shared access is if you look at the plan, look at the contours, it's ideally suited to accessing this lot and accessing this house. I understand that, you know, being over twelve percent creates some concern as far as emergency vehicles entering the site. I guess my take on that is we've got the first two hundred odd feet of the driveway, starting off relatively flat, and then slowly building up to the twelve percent, so we have a long straight run. In fact, it's a long straight run right up to where we're proposing to come off that existing driveway. So, that's essentially what we're here asking. I, I know, you know, typically the shared driveway is the way the zoning is worded. You try and share a property line, driveway right down the property line, the, the common property line, unless topography or other factors play into it, in which case we need to come in to see you. So, that's why we're here, we're asking to, to continue to use this driveway. To create a new curb cut and come up off of Goodrich Street would just create a lot of earthwork, a lot of grading, a lot of clearing, that by using that existing driveway, we can avoid completely.
Thank you.
So.
Any comments?
Mr.?
No.
So, the, so the driveway exists currently?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
For Lot four?
Yes.
Yes.
The entirety of it except for the turnaround for the new house?
It's stuff, so it's really steep here, and then, so like right here it gets steep, and then it's steep up there.
So, I would definitely be inclined to go with that, since it is existing for a single family. The only thing, the only concern I would have is if fire needed to go to the new house, are they gonna be able to turn around, or are they gonna have, well, they probably could back up, doesn't look that long.
Back out, back up the driveway and right out.
I have a question to the Chair. Do we, it would seem to me that this creates, in effect, a new driveway or a shared driveway. Do we have within our abilities the ability to make a decision on this? Or is this a need for a variance?
That is, was gonna be one of my questions, Adam, because in six point four two D, it says the maximum grade of any outdoor driveway is twelve percent. So, is that within our discretion? The existing driveway, I understand, I have no issue with. But we're in essence adding, we're creating a new driveway that exceeds that.
Well, the, the new part of the driveway. Yeah, the created part of the driveway is actually almost zero grade. Right, it's the shared driveway that is.
An existing driveway.
Yes.
Out of, that's, well, but you're doubling your chances for something to go wrong.
Certainly.
Um, and the reason they didn't come off the existing road, I would assume, is you have the same issue. Is there any way to regrade the existing driveway, so?
No.
No, because.
Look at the contour of the land.
It's cheaper than doing it off the road.
Know what I mean? The, the contour of the land wouldn't permit you to change that significantly.
I drove it today, they've already basically done a bunch of site work, and it looks like you installed a well. I guess my, again, I would reiterate, do, do we have that, Kim, is that within our discretion?
The building inspector didn't raise an issue as far as this seeking the approval through the planning board, the, the determination. He would also be required to make a parallel determination. I did speak to the fire chief, he said that in general, he doesn't see this necessarily as an issue, but he wanted to look at the site in person before he gave a firm answer. You know, and I think, you know, where it's a portion of the driveway of about a hundred and seventy or so feet, a little above fifteen percent, you know, it could be a concern. Clearly, the engineer doesn't seem to think so. The fire chief, on its face, didn't come out right away and say no. And I think where it's a straight of way, it's probably.
Was the zoning commissioner specifically asked about the grades, or did we just hand it to him and he made?
Oh, no, he was specific, we had a, this was a conversation that was, had prior to them filing with this board, between the commissioner, myself, and I believe the builder.
Again, at face value, like, I just don't, where do we draw the line when we use our discretion to do something outside the bounds of the bylaw, it's for me. So.
I, I think historically on these, the board always has. I don't know if it's built into the zoning that you have, they have discretion. But as far as I understand, that's kind of been the case.
I'm inclined to agree with you.
Well, because we, I mean, where, do we have discretion in setbacks, and we don't. And this is, to me, seems to be a dimension. We say no flat roofs, so you gotta pitch it a certain percentage. That's a, would be a decision for the ZBA. I just don't want to overstep our bounds by approving something that doesn't meet the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Because, again, if they're building it within a setback, would we just say, oh, we'll forget about the setback, or?
I think there's two ways to look at it.
I just don't think it's our decision to make.
I think there's two ways to look at it. One way, which would be how I assume you presented it, which is that really you're looking at from just what's on Lot five. That's essentially what, you know, the concern is. Am I right?
Lot five is the, where the new house is proposed, and that driveway is well within the twelve percent grade.
Yeah. So, the other side, I guess, the other half of this is, you know, as I said at first, which is now that this is no longer just one driveway, there's no longer just one house, there's two houses affected, that the whole thing has to be looked at again, I guess, to going to the Lot five. And my read is that that is a ZBA function.
Well, the, the, the existing driveway is just that, it's existing.
But it's an existing one driveway, but to create an existing shared driveway with a grade that is not within our parameters, that would seem to me to be a zoning board function.
Right?
Well, it says the maximum grade of any outdoor driveway is twelve percent. Do we let them do twenty?
Right.
Do we let them do forty-five? It's.
Well, that's interesting.
It's out of our discretion.
Well, I would never come to you with a new driveway in excess of twelve percent. We're asking.
You have to accept a nonconforming.
Right, and.
As, as conforming in a new use, so.
So, you're suggesting that he would need a special permit to expand the use of a pre-existing nonconforming lot or structure? And then you would potentially.
If the ZBA gives him the.
Gives him the variance. The common driveway determination?
Right.
Basically, yeah, basically, they're creating a second driveway that's nonconforming, because there's no way they can get to that house without using the nonconforming portion.
Oh, I understand the logic, I'm just.
If the, if the first portion didn't exceed twelve percent, I would have no issue. And the second portion was fifteen percent, that was pre-existing. But due to the fact that they're increasing the chances of something happening, and again, we discussed this at town meeting, and there was some, I think, not in abundance, but a lot of discussion surrounding the, the safety of it. That's just my thought.
Mm-hmm.
And again, where do we draw the line? If we start modifying the bylaw to.
Well, we drew the.
Here, where do we do it?
We drew the line with the previous permit application where they were rebuilding half of the building, they were doubling the size of it, and we didn't require them to upgrade parking facilities on the undisturbed existing portion. I can say it, right? Past public hearing.
But, yeah.
Ecologic fibers. Right, we didn't make them upgrade the loading dock, we didn't make them conform to our parking and driveway standards for their existing loading dock where they had to back onto the street. We didn't make them do that, right?
Yeah, but we made them modify the third curb cut.
Yeah, we didn't allow it because it wasn't allowed before.
Right, this isn't allowed.
It's an existing condition.
It's an existing condition in its current use.
We're adding up. I don't disagree that it doesn't agree with the letter of the bylaw. I don't disagree with that, but as a board, as elected official members of the board, we have some, and, and our director is not telling us, no, you, you shouldn't. He's actually kind of sounding like he's going the other way with it, but, I, I don't see an issue. I mean, it's, it's, it's in some beautiful area of the town. They, they're keeping the same curb cut, they're not disturbing the existing stone wall, they're not impeding the sightlines, they're not doing any of these other things that the park, that the, that the bylaw says that they can't do. They're just simply hooking up a conforming driveway to an existing nonconforming driveway.
And calling it a shared driveway.
Yeah.
I, I would agree with Mr. Bittner's point that it becomes a separate thing, though. That right now, it's just a driveway, and that this is creating a shared driveway. So, the question is, can there be a shared driveway that does not conform?
If I could just add to that, the bylaw allows two houses on a shared driveway by right.
Certainly, but, but I guess my concern is, I don't, I'm in the same, I have a shared driveway, right? Where I live in town, so I certainly understand and recognize that. I think that the question that Mr. Bittner has posed is that, you know, when you have a shared driveway that no longer meets the grade requirements, is that within our purview? And I don't, my read is that it's not. That is a ZBA thing to say, yes, you can have a shared driveway with a grade variance of this much. And I would be inclined to believe that they'd probably give it to you. Because they're saying it's already existing, it's already functioning, you know, but I don't know, I, I'm not sure if we can make that decision. Because our limits say twelve.
I'm pretty sure the board always has, haven't they? I, I don't have the zoning in front of me, so I can't.
I'm sorry, but we're, we're, it's through the Chair. I think we're getting away from that. We're trying to get away from, you guys have done it in the past.
And, with all due respect.
The note.
And, and that's fine, but I thought, I, I don't know what the zoning says.
I don't think that they're, it says they can make the determination on the location. I don't know that it gives them.
And again, this was just, what, two years ago, not.
The percentage of the open space? That was a number, they had to get a special variation.
What do you?
Well, I, I would say.
No, I'm just saying, we revised the.
This would be a Section seven special permit. It would be under Section seven of the protective bylaw, it'd be pre-existing nonconforming, it'd be expansion of that. Would be my initial read of it, if you felt that you didn't have the ability to give him the use of it for additional traffic. It would need the, the expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming. Because it's not a, I don't think it's a special permit dimensional variation, because it's, it already exists. So, they're looking to change the intensity of the use.
I mean, if they were to tear down the existing house and build it up, I wouldn't have a problem, because it's, but, or.
Do you have?
I just don't think it's, if I was on the ZBA, I probably wouldn't have an issue.
I was gonna ask.
They sit on the planning board, and I don't think it's at our discretion to modify the bylaw, especially when it deals with maximums like that, in regards to safety. I think that's a ZBA decision.
If, if I could just ask, I mean, are you opposed to it in, in general? I, I'm not asking you to make a decision on it, just your, your opinion.
I'm opposed to us approving something outside of the.
I, I, no, I understand that. I, I just think it's an ideal use of an existing driveway.
Yeah.
Well, we also have the ability to give an opinion to the ZBA, that we don't see an issue with it.
Yeah.
That's.
I think that's what.
I'm not opposed to doing that either.
But it's.
But I'm just saying, it's, I don't think it's our decision to make.
Wrong venue.
Yeah, I support what you're.
And again, I'm not trying to stifle the process, but where, again, from this side of the table, where do we draw the line? Where we modify what's in here, just in our, our personal thoughts.
Right, well, where's the line drawn between what is, what is their job and what is our job?
I think this is reasonable proposal. I mean, I, I personally think, you know, if, if this were in front of us, then I would be in favor of it, but I'm just not sure if this is in front of us, you know?
I, I, just so you understand, in all due respect, in, if the board is changing how it operates, we as engineers, it would be nice to know, I'm not saying.
We're not, I don't think we're changing, I mean, we're, we're adhering to the bylaw.
And I, and I completely understand that. I, I think boards prior to you have conducted business in such as this, and we just go on what we know, and so if we're, it, it's just a commentary, and it's, it's nothing, you know, against you.
I guess my retort to that is that's how we end up in some of these positions, where they made up their, like, begin with the parking capacity. They, they made their, of their own minds, and I don't think that was part of their decision-making process.
Going back to the recent, the last applicant, you mean?
Right, I mean, we're still cleaning up messes from that thought process. We just let, do whatever we feel.
Yep.
And it's, that's not what it is, it's, we do what the bylaw says. And that's just me, I mean, it's, I'm one person and one law.
Continuing to create messes from the existing bylaws.
Huh?
We're continuing to create messes from the existing.
I know, I know.
I've pushed to fix some of these problems.
So.
I've been the most vocal advocate for that, so.
So, do we tell the applicant that they should withdraw their submission and then go before the ZBA, is that where we're at?
It's just a finding, so it's not a public hearing, there's no.
Yeah.
You could say, you know, if you come back with a special permit, we would approve it. I mean, it doesn't sound like there's a, a lot of opposition to it. I don't even know that there's a necessity for them to, to reappear. If, if the board doesn't, if the board feels that, that they're okay with it outside of that stretch of.
Would that be backwards process, though?
So, seven point three is conforming use, nonconforming uses?
Correct.
Can, can we? But this might shed some light on what everybody's saying. Lawfully nonconforming use of a building structure or land shall not be altered, extended, changed, or substantially extended except to a conforming use unless authorized by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection B. Seven point three, it's on page one twenty-one of the new one. So, I think the one, the one in parents kind of covers this. It's not really expanding the nonconformance, it's not.
Well, yes, it is, it's doubling the amount of.
It's expanded.
The instance where you could have an issue.
Physical nonconformance on the lot is not being changed.
Correct. They're not making it steeper.
It's, it is doubling the capacity, or no, it's doubling the use. The capacity is the same, and it's probably far greater than two. But it's still not any different quality, character, or degree from the original use. Degree might be twice, as you're saying, use twice as much.
Well, it says extended.
Yeah, so not be extended, changed.
So, they're extending the nonconforming use.
Except. The extension is conforming. It's less than twelve percent.
The extension is.
No, they.
But they're not changing the existing to a performing use. Okay. We're just interpreting differently, that's fine, that's fine. And I don't want to belabor it either. So, I've said my two cents.
So.
Would this be a request for withdrawal?
Well, I guess how would we, I mean, do we reject the application?
There's no, there's no application.
No application, there's no submission, there's no withdrawal. It would be, you're not willing to find that without, if, and I would, it would need to be, I guess, by vote, because it seems like there's a split amongst the board, that you feel that you can't approve it based on, you know, the defect in percentage grade, and if he were to correct that, it sounds like you would approve it.
Could I just add to that? It didn't sound to me as if the board had an issue with the percentage grade, but rather the mechanism by which it gets approved.
Sure, correct.
Because I would hope if, and maybe I'll have to have this, this discussion with you, is, is who do we go to? What's the mechanism? And if it's not this board, could we at least get some support from this board?
A letter?
Something in, in pursuing, reusing this, or, or using this driveway as a shared driveway for construction of a single-family home.
Couldn't you and the zoning officer sit down and make the decision?
Then we can talk to them.
So, then we can, we can give them the rubber stamp until that's such, until that happens, right? Because it doesn't seem like any of us have a problem with reusing the existing driveway.
No.
Right?
No.
If, if I could, Adam, and maybe this is where you were going, the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer, I believe, and, and if you're okay with this, and you've stated such, and he says, that's all I need, and if it's at his discretion, then we could be on our merry way.
That's fine, if we, I mean, if we, I just feel it's not our decision make. If we go to the person whose decision it is to make and say, you know what, they can make the decision, I'm happy to make the decision.
Right.
Or if we get somebody that says, we're okay with it, and it goes to us, I'm happy to make the decision.
Well, I.
I just don't think it's, I think we're overstepping our bounds by making a decision on this.
I agree, but I would differentiate what you're saying, which is I think it's our belief that this would go before the Board of Appeals, correct?
But I guess.
Is that what I'm reading?
Well, what he's saying is if the interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer is that it is fine, this is fine.
And that it doesn't require or constitute an extension.
Yeah, my understanding is that if he goes to the building inspector and requests a building permit, building inspector says, no, you can't get a building permit, then he would have to go to the ZBA.
Yeah.
So, not it, or?
Well, it, it's more convoluted than that, you're, it, it's, what, what the applicant is saying is he wants to go to the building inspector and get a determination as to whether or not the proposal constitutes an expansion, extension, modification, whatever, of a nonconforming use. If the building commissioner says it does not, that automatically gives you the power to grant, because he is the zoning enforcement officer, and unless you disagree with his interpretation, which would be you filing with the zoning board to contest his interpretation, then you have the power to then grant the alteration of the location of the common driveway. So, if he went to the building inspector, which has already been done, the building inspector said, I can't give you a permit, you have a common driveway that doesn't split the lot, you need to go through this process and, and send them to the planning board, and is waiting to make his determinations independently.
That's already happened.
Correct.
Oh, so.
He, the building inspector, you know, the building commissioner did say, you know, I don't know about the grade there, you'd have to look at it and see what it says, but he, he has not mentioned to me, since we've had that meeting and since this has been submitted, that, excuse me, that there's a, a, a filing required with the zoning board. Doesn't mean that he hasn't made that determination, it's not been communicated. So, generally with these determinations, they're done independently. The planning board makes a determination, the building inspector make a determination, as long as both are affirmative, the, the alternate location is approved. I can follow up with him and, and Rob and, and find out exactly what appeals would be necessary.
So moved.
So.
So.
For me, I mean, I, I don't think it's our decision to make, but I'm hoping to hear from our zoning commissioner, I just don't have anything to.
I like that.
Something in writing from our zoning commissioner saying, it's not any, it's not increasing a nonconforming uses that, basically, that the gist of it.
Yep. Yep.
But I think what you're looking for is from a letter from us that says that we would support this.
If it's the case that the building inspector makes that, whatever finding he makes, and he needs something from you folks saying, "You're okay with it," I'd love to have that in place, so if he makes that decision, we can move ahead.
Can we just approve it contingent on the zoning inspector not declaring? No?
Oh, uh...
Not declaring that...
No, you don't want to do, you don't want to condition an approval on someone else's approval.
Yeah, well, not only that, but...
It wouldn't be an approval. It would be a lack of an expansion of use. Clarification.
I think that's parsing words for approval for approval. I understand what you're saying. I still think it walks in that, in that realm, and I'm not generally comfortable with that.
All right, so you have to go, you have to go there, find out whether or not it has to come back here, and then...
And I mean, we can have this back on in two weeks.
Yeah.
There's no advertising, there's no fee, there's none of that. It's...
So the thing is, we don't know the definitive answer as to whether or not it needs to come back here, so... But if it comes back here, we're gonna prove it. But you have to go find out whether it's coming back here.
Or it's going to the ZBA, or it's all set, right?
If I might just convolute this further.
Yay!
Why not?
Section on driveways, so...
That's us.
Oh, I get the newer section. I get the, the last item before bicycle parking. Not more than two primary dwellings may maintain one common entrance and/or driveway. Said driveway shall be located through the frontage or access strip of both lots equally, including lots with reduced 50% frontage. Such driveway should be permitted only after issuance of a building permit and shall relate to the design and construction standards under section C1, C3, da-da-da-da. It goes on to say, "If such a common driveway cannot be located as determined above," which is, I'm maintaining we can't, "a determination may be made by the planning board and building official for other acceptable locations." So the zoning actually does put it on your table.
That was actually speaking to splitting the property line, but I agree.
Yeah, I think, just in regard to the location, not, again, just the grade.
So could you vote to support the location?
That was what I was hoping.
Yeah, I have no problem with the location. It's the fact that it's an excess of the...
At least that's the first step.
Yeah, and then, so we need a motion to...
Then let the zoning commissioners...
Determine how he wants to handle the remainder of it.
Okay, and he can either...
Yep.
I have no issue with that.
I think our, that should, we should still note in there that we're, that we believe that this expands or extends the current use, the current non-conforming use. Because what I, what I, I guess what I'm saying is this, if we make a decision that this is something that, you know, we support, and then he takes that decision, which I'm sure you will, to the building department, and, you know, that maybe that may influence their determination of, and saying that we've already considered this, we've come to a decision on this.
Well, hopefully it will, because the right solution here is to use this shared driveway.
Yeah, that, I would agree.
And not tear the whole side of the hill apart.
The building commissioner also needs to make his own independent determination.
Right, so all we're gonna do is we're going to approve the location, because it's not an evenly split down the middle of the property line, and we can do that, right? And we can propagate that information as well, correct?
Correct.
So all we're saying is, the planning board understood our responsibility on this arrangement as to approving the location of the driveway, and we, of the shared driveway, and we approve it. And then if there's any other determination asked to be made on the use of that common driveway for other purposes, that would be up to the ZBA to determine if they want to make additional rulings on it. Is that okay?
Right, I'd want to specify in regards to the excess of the maximum grade, but I...
We are not approving of the excessive of the...
It's, that's not our...
I want to voice our concerns in regards, so that's what they're deciding on. They're deciding on if the grade. We're deciding the location. They're deciding if the grade is acceptable. And I just want to make it clear, we're not giving an opinion on the grade. That's their decision to make. We're just solely, the placement is okay.
Yeah, I think we have to just note that there is a grade concern that needs to be answered.
Who would have, who would have approved the driveway having a greater grade than normal initially?
Well, that would have been the building commissioner if the house was built at a time when building code was adopted. I believe this house is...
This house is old.
Old, like eighteen teens old.
Dig 'em up!
So probably nobody, the cows pulling the cart, determined where the driveway was, because they could...
But generally, it's the building commission, because my, my shared driveway is non-conforming as well. So it was the building commi, and my house was just built a little while ago. So it's the building commissioner that made that determination?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it just maintains consistency, you know what I'm saying?
So I would move that we approve the location of the shared driveway?
Second.
Yeah, my only discussion is that we specify that we're not addressing the excess of maximum grade. That's, do we have a way to verbalize that to them, so they're aware?
Would that be an amendment to the motion?
We're not either endorsing nor, not endorsing it, we're just saying, "That's your decision to make. We don't care of the placement."
Is that an amendment?
I'm asking Adam. I'm asking a question.
I'm asking you if that's an amendment to his motion. Would that be an amendment to the motion on the table?
Well, I'm asking whether we have the ability to even add that amendment.
I guess you have the ability to add anything you want. You could phrase it that you're approving the location only.
Okay.
You know, the planning board feels the location is appropriate, and, you know...
I think that we are approving what we feel we have the jurisdiction to approve, and I don't think we need to add any additional language to it.
I think that...
We're not approving the color of it. We're not approving...
I think that's, that's an issue, but I mean...
I agree. What we're saying is, we think the driveway where it is, sharing the driveway as it is, including the grade, is perfectly fine, but we don't think it's our right to be able to vote on it as a board, because it's outside of our realm of being able to vote on. So simply by voting on what we do think we have the right to vote on, I don't think is indicating anything faulty.
I don't think the grade is okay. I'm saying that's not our decision to make, whether the grade's okay.
But what we're saying...
Placement is fine. The grade is not okay.
But what we're saying is that we just don't think we should, we have the right to vote on whether or not we think the grade is okay. I'm fine with the grade, being that it's an existing driveway that's been there for many years, and we're just putting another house on it. So, but we're not voting on the grade, because we think we don't have the right to vote on the grade. So we are voting on the location of the driveway, which we all are fine with. Is that correct? Well, there's a motion on the floor.
I don't, I guess the court will determine whether it's correct.
They are creating a new non-conforming driveway if they use the existing part. But that's just me.
And should we make a vote on the location before there is determination that this is an acceptable grade?
That's where my brain's going.
I don't want to give them a no.
Well, again, if they...
That doesn't look too excessive to me.
Let me see.
That's the, but, again, the bylaw, but the bylaw dictates what is excessive.
I understand.
It's got a maximum of 12%.
I understand, but we're mincing terms, I think. We feel that this is an appropriate use of the property with the new house, and we're approving what we feel is under our purview. I think this is just what Ken said.
Yeah, that is.
And then, "That's it. Drop our voice."
But I don't feel it's an appropriate...
Because Adam is gonna take it to somebody else, and if that somebody else says, "Yeah, no, they have, they have total rate," then he can go home happy, and he doesn't have to come back to us, and we don't have to continue to, to talk about stuff in circles. But, I mean, I think we all see each other's point.
Yeah.
But I think we're all trying to...
I don't understand why we can't, then just have a motion that says, "We would like to express our approval of the location of the driveway, provided that the, the building, uh, code enforcement officer does not find that the..."
Excessing grade.
Excess grade is a, an issue warranting action by the ZBA. I'd be done with it. Then it's out of our hands. It's all covered. If the, if he, see, I want his attention drawn to the fact, and that will draw his attention to it, and he can make the determination whether or not he thinks it's a sufficient zoning cause of action. It puts it in the right people's hands.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't think it's a big deal, then it gets, yeah, no, I don't think so. Fine.
So how about a, how about the, the, "On behalf of our client, we are submitting a driveway plan to the planning board for review and approval. So let's write a letter saying, 'We have reviewed this,' and, and I don't, I guess we can't say we don't have a problem with it, but we don't know that we can approve it.'" Didn't we always already agree that all five of us think that this is the best use? This is the best way to go, but we just don't think that we are able to make that decision?
I think everybody feels that way except for you, Greg, right? Because you think it's not the best solution.
No, not as, as proposed.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So you think they should rebuild the driveway?
I'm saying it's, I feel it's not within our discretion to allow them to exceed the 12%.
That's the first statement.
Correct.
Just like we did with the bill bills. It was percentages.
So go on, Matt. Let's... We do not feel that we can give approval based on section blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
Done, right?
Yeah.
Sure?
I think.
And then he moves on to...
Then he says, "No, you sure you can." I don't consider it...
That's fine, and we can put it on for the next agenda if he says, "You can."
Okay.
So can you modify your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Your emotion or your motion?
I withdraw my, I withdraw my motion.
That's too complicated. Somebody else can suggest what they want.
Okay, so Matthew, that was really good. I thought if you could... I move, I move that we draft a letter saying that the planning board has reviewed the application for a driveway plan. I don't think it says a shared driveway plan? I don't think this says it. However, upon discussion, we do not feel that we have...
Think.
We do not agree that, it does not appear that we have the ability...
Jurisdiction.
To, the jurisdiction to approve a common driveway for a shared use existing greater than 12%.
Right.
Period.
Yes.
Right?
Right.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye. And in this instance, I would like to apologize. I don't, it's the process, I think, that is flawed, not your application.
I understand.
And again, I just want to get away from this board taking liberties with what's in the bylaw.
Not to belabor the point, I think the bylaw, if that's the case, should be clearer.
I don't disagree.
It kind of kicks it into your court, so that's why we're here, and if you don't feel that it's your responsibility to be reviewing these, or take full responsibility, in the converse, and say, somehow you're this permit granting authority, and you can waive strict requirements or compliance with the bylaw. But it, at least, I don't want to go to two places for one thing.
I understand, and again...
Thank you, I think.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I might be around.
We need to either extend or have a, have an evening, right? Call it an evening?
At 10:30?
Oh, it's 10:30?
10:30 we need to decide by, I believe. Hopefully, we won't make it to that point.
Hopefully not.
All righty. Do we want to, yep, is that on here? Oh, the warrant articles, okay, it is on here.
Oh, the public hearing.
Public hearing regarding the board warrant articles. This is a new public hearing, so if the clerk would please read it.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2017, 6:35 PM. Close. Joseph Pilata Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. 462. To amend the protective bylaw of the town of Lunenburg by deleting section 6.7 Stormwater Management NPDES Phase II permits and section 6.8 Discharges to the Municipal Storm Sewer System and Waters of the Commonwealth NPDES Phase II permits from the protective bylaw and moving them to the general bylaw, and amend the table of the contents to reflect same. Copies are on file in the planning office, 960 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass.
So I think he said it all.
This is just... Was there a verbiage change?
There was a small verbiage change in...
And that was just to make it compliant with the law, right?
Yep, hold on. In 260, oh, I think Marjorie might have the, the old version. In 204, 1C, the warrant says, "Under applicability, no person may undertake a construction activity, including clearing, grading, and excavation that results in a land disturbance." In the warrant version, unfortunately, this is an older version, there is, after that first comma with activity, it says after the effective date of this bylaw. And what that would do is prevent existing permit holders, like some of the gentlemen who've come in with A&R lots that were five and eight and nine lots who got stormwater permits, from being subject to this once it becomes live in the general bylaw. So it would be carrying forward from the adoption of this in the general bylaw and not requiring those who already hold the permit to reapply under the general bylaw.
Okay.
Something I brought up at the Charter Review Committee, and certainly I think it needs to be addressed, is I think that, you know, when we got the warrant article in the mail, there was a couple, you know, there's an error on the front page, which is the date and, you know, the day and the day of the week, rather. And then the other thing is, you know, I think for a lot of residents, because I, you know, the people that have spoken to me about it, I've received a couple of phone calls, and they said, "What is this monstrosity that you guys are trying to get approved?" And I said, "It's already approved. We're just trying to relocate it within, within the bylaw with no language change." And it would make a lot more sense if we could add in some kind of blurb that says, you know, "This is an already approved bylaw," or at least be able to explain. I know this is like not the form for it, but I'm simply to say, I think it would make more sense if we could, you know, before we give, this was half the article, half the, half the, um, half the booklet that came in the mail, to at least give people an explanation that this has been on the books, it's just being relocated based on current...
I think usually they try to do that in the, there's usually a, a table in which they try to explain what each, common terms.
There is some of that, and in, I mean, I've been before the Board of Selectmen at least twice to talk about this. The Finance Committee once, and there is a presentation at town meeting to explain the purpose and intent of the warrant articles. So, you know, I think that...
I'm talking about the mailing. For, for the majority of people who don't participate, who get these in the, who get these in the mail, I think it becomes overwhelming, because it's legal lease, and it doesn't really explain to them...
Do you think, do you think, are you saying that you think it makes them parti, makes them not participate?
What I'm saying is, I was at someone's house, and they pulled it out of the trash, and they said, "I don't know what this even means, so why am I gonna read it?" And what I'm saying is that it would make a lot more sense if we can, for the people who aren't as well at public speaking as all of us are, for the people who aren't as, you know, interested in coming here, for all the people who really do watch at home, that if we can just, you know, I think it would be nice if they could have a little bit of an explanation of why this is in there, because it is half of the warrant.
Yeah. I think that's more of a fundamental shift on the warrant creation than it is anything else.
Yeah, it's not on us.
The other thing is, is this was supposed to be, I mean, we've had it on the agenda for three meetings, so if we had done it originally, we would have been able to say, make that suggestion, that we could put a preamble to it or some sort of...
I don't know if you're, more than the same 250 people that always show up.
And again, I was gonna, that was my second point.
It's really like 97.
The warrant doesn't do you any good unless you bring it to town meeting, vote on it, because you're just using it for bathroom meeting. So I think the people that do show up will get a... Um, so I, I think the people that do show up will get a, a, you know, a synopsis of what prompted it and why it's, and again, this has been on the agenda for weeks, but we're up again now up against the clock where we have to take action on it prior.
So I guess my recommendation is that going forward, before we submit these lengthy things, that we, uh, put just a blurb of what, what it's for.
Well...
Or that it's moving, the people at home can understand.
There's no vehicle for that, so that's what I mean.
Because you can't put it in the warrant.
That's what I mean by warrant creation, we don't determine what goes in the warrant. We submit our articles.
Yeah.
And what's approved is the language of the motion and the language of the article. So that's a function of the town manager's office and how the warrant gets created. So I could submit a blurb, but I don't know that it makes it into the warrant at that point. And I, you know, I, I would also argue that, you know, sure, we have a lot of wordy, weird legalist stuff, but the same could be said for all the financial articles, or, you know, I mean, all the articles could theoretically use an explanation.
It'd be very hard to write a synopsis without having bias.
Right.
It is, and it's very difficult.
I understand that you're trying to get people to understand what they're voting on, and, and we do do that, we have done that in the past, we suggested giving handouts so that when people do go to town meeting, they have a handout beforehand, so that the first time they're hearing about why it's being introduced, so they can, I mean, in this sense, in this instance, I don't think a handout is necessary, because it's a small change. But you're right, when we're doing, you know, like when we removed over, tried to remove the Whalen overlay, we added a handout, or, we didn't add a handout, and I think that was part of the issue, is people had no idea until we stood up there.
I think there was other issues.
Well, I, I, well, we had more issues than that, but again, I, I definitely encourage that, that we add more clarity, because I too got the same, like, phone call, what is this and why is it being done, and what changes are being made? So I asked Adam for a redline version, and he basically said there isn't one, so...
Yeah.
I know that the, the solution is not on us, it's, it's really another body, another deliberate body, but it's just, you know, it's overwhelming.
Yeah, it is.
When you read that, and you're like, what?
So, the action we need on this is an endorsement, or do we just have to vote?
Yeah, I mean, you need to do a public hearing, you know, if there's any comment, any public comment, and then whether the board supports it or not.
Get open to public hearing?
We just did.
You only have to do a public hearing on the, the deletion, because that's a zoning article, the other is a general bylaw article, which does not require a public hearing. Figure that out.
Removal of the zoning article?
Yes. The remove, any, any change to the zoning bylaw requires a public hear.
Right, but I mean, since we're moving into the general, isn't that removal as well?
No, the, the zoning, the removal of the zoning is what requires the public hearing, not the placement of the general.
I thought you were talking about the very beach side.
Alright.
What do we need to do?
So, this is a public hearing, right? So we can close it and then vote on it?
Correct.
Do we have any public comment from the public?
Guess not.
Hearing none, seeing none.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we would move that we accept the, uh, the proposed change?
I move that we endorse the proposed change.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So that's just a formality, not, not required.
Right, right.
Their public hearing.
Alrighty.
Quickest one yet.
Good rich street, we've done minutes approval, so we need to get through this, unfortunately, because, again, deadlines.
I, I want to make this motion, I, I would, I would like to move that we approve the minutes, all previous minutes, with the note that going forward, Marjorie's name should be on all of our documents.
I think that sounds good, but we don't really need to approve minutes.
Yeah.
But I do think that would be nice.
No, I think it's a good idea to have Marjorie's name added as a participant.
Second.
All in favor? Discussion?
Was there a second?
It wasn't a second, I'll second it.
Right.
We don't need to approve minutes anymore?
No, we're approving that Marjorie's name be put on the documents.
I second that.
You realize Marjorie writes these documents, she needs her own name out.
Yes, we do.
She wants nothing to do with us. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alrighty.
Make sure you let her know.
So were there changes to the minutes, or are you going to go through them date by date?
No.
No.
No, we're good, I read them all, I have, does anyone have any...
It was one liner typo, but it's just a net.
Just send us an email, Scribner's error, we'll fix it.
It was a Scribner's error, yeah.
Alright, moving on. Committee reports, let's do these capital planning, we meet tomorrow. Um, school building committee was supposed to meet, uh, last week, but we continued for another month, because they needed to finish up some paperwork. Uh, Green Communities Task Force met, um, we had the, the consultant from MRPC that was provided through the grant funds, um, we're looking at identifying new projects and moving forward with our grant submission, I think, which is due in January. Stormwater Task Force.
Um, I'm not, I don't think we've met since the last time...
We're on vacation till January.
Yeah, right, we, um, we had to call the last meeting, anyways, we haven't met.
Okay.
And AgCom, um, the market season's over, um, they are bolstering down for the winter, trying to get some articles ready for the summer, for the spring, um, what it... Oh, oh, no, no, the, um, there's great support for finding an open market, a public market space that will be hopefully one of the articles next year, um, to approve, uh, public market. And, um, there's looking into a walkthrough of, um, the TCP, specifically the kitchen and cafeteria, and they want a walkthrough of the old primary school. That's...
Just as a footnote to that, uh, we did receive a list of things that Green Communities monies can be used for, and appliances was on that list, so...
MJTC, is that right? So what's next?
Yep.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for them.
Ken?
Yes, um, the, uh, the last meeting was last Wednesday, but unfortunately, I was traveling, so I was not able to attend it, uh, I don't suppose anybody else attended it?
No, I wasn't either.
Okay, um, so I will give an update on it when the minutes come out.
Uh, space has not met. I went to the MRPC meeting last Thursday, I believe it was, um, it was a good meeting, they talked about the, uh, Community Compact at length, and, uh, we, we covered some of the grant money that's available, uh, on an ongoing basis for Community Compact, uh, BMPs. We have, uh, three that we selected for our town, which is pretty smart, because some towns only, only thought they had to choose one, and so they are now ineligible to any, to, uh, grant money for other reasons. So, um, in talking to Heather, the town manager, um, I come to find out that we actually have already received three, I think, three grants, um, through that program, and things are moving along. And I can tell you that MRPC communicates, the communication back and forth between MRPC and our town manager seems to be pretty solid, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, those grants, I think, facilitated the economic development discussions?
No, Economic Development's D L T A.
Yes.
The, it's the website, it's a security...
Cyber security.
Cyber security and stormwater.
Oh, alright, those are different, though. Anyways, good stuff. Open space?
I said, we didn't, we haven't met.
Charter Review Committee?
Charter Review's coming along well, um, we are, I think the goal that we just set for ourselves is by the end of the year, we want to hear back from all of the remaining boards and committees within the town regarding any section that pertains to them. And, um, this upcoming meeting is this Wednesday, and we will be going over Articles 1 and 2. So, Mr. Allison did provide some information to the board, that was read into the record very early on. Um, highlights, you know, we are pretty committed to, the Charter Review Committee seems pretty committed to keeping the town government structure the same at this stage. Uh, one of the things that we're really exploring is changing town meetings, um, to, instead of them being, we're looking at how we can play with the current format of it, to maybe spread it out over, um, multiple days, to put it on weekdays, um, nights to increase participation. Uh, right now, I think everyone's recognizing that to get people to come and sit on a Saturday all day is, uh, is becoming very difficult, and that maybe there's a better approach to how we do this. So we've been looking at what other towns do, um, many towns break it up into, into multiple days, and then they try to mix the hot button items into those multiple days to keep the quorum. Um, but that's kind of what I think the focus is on, is playing with the time, also looking at keeping, um, instead of having a special town meeting every fall, to do two town meetings a year. So that's kind of what we're looking at, we're focusing on, I'll have more information at our next meeting.
So this is going to remain a five-year position?
Yes, for now, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't got to, we haven't, we're, I, the goal is that we...
Taking our input.
Yeah, the goal is that we get to the point in, um, in, I think it's January, and we should actually start going through each individual board, um, but yeah, we're inputting everyone who has input into what they would like to see changed, all of that is going to be considered, but we are not at that point yet.
Okay.
If you want to change it, do, if, let me know offline.
So question, um, the, adding the fall time meeting as a, as a gen, as an annual time meeting?
Correct.
So then, that would be regular annual time meeting requirements, rather than special time meeting requirements?
Correct.
Twice a year.
So like, was it budget items don't need a two-thirds vote, they'll just need a simple majority?
I think it's, it's, we're very early on, um, but this is just what we're exploring, is, you know, we recognize that maybe the goal is to split this stuff up. And so it would be, the idea would be to have two scheduled town meetings. The other thing that we were considering is the time, um, maybe May is not the best, it's kind of the, the first decent weekend of the year, and, uh, most, you know, so maybe looking at moving that up into some time in April, and that was one of the things.
October.
Yeah.
Great.
Tax break for attendance.
Put it on the tax deadline.
And, and, you know, we haven't brought that up, but there has, I've heard from a lot of residents that, that people are interested in a tax break for attendance. I don't know if that's legal, I don't know if that's possible.
People are interested in a tax break for anything. I would say on weeknight town meetings, having multiple nights unscheduled, saying we're going to have it on this fixed night, and if it goes over, we go to this night, and if it go... It is even more difficult to retain a quorum.
Yeah.
Uh, because people need to be able to schedule their lives around it, and I've seen a number of town meetings start hours late, or just failed to get a quorum based on weeknight attendance, and, and, you know, things that come up during the day and, and that kind of stuff. And, you know, there are ways that it can work, but I think that it's, it's not a surefire bet the way that...
Yeah. Well, I want to clarify that.
If you limited the first 10 articles, will be this night, the second 10, you know?
Yes, that's what I wanted to say, is it's not a, let's go and keep going, it's a, this night, right, the thought process now is, let's have X articles, one through eight on this day, articles nine through such on this date, and that way it breaks it up, um, you know. But that's, we're very on, early on in the conversation, I certainly don't want to tell people that this is something that we've decided, because we haven't decided anything, um, we've, we're simply talking, so that's where we're at.
Alrighty. Definitions and use table, are we working on a, kind of full draft here?
Yeah, and I, you know, I assume we're going to move on to some of the, the more special use stuff tonight, and start talking about, you know, planned residential areas and...
Yeah, let's do it.
Whatnot.
Let's get into that.
Brought my slide rule.
Are we adding in a workshop?
What was the question?
Is it you can move?
So are we adding in a workshop in the course of...
We haven't yet.
I move that we, uh, move the definitions and use table to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Where are we?
But no, I guess my question would be, when do you feel a revised draft of what we've already been through is, will be roughly?
I would have to look at where I'm at, but it won't...
Before next meeting?
No, it won't be before next, I assume we were going to keep moving on as I compiled the draft, so I would say sometime in December, I would have a compiled draft of where we're at.
Okay, but what is our, what are we working on?
Well, I mean, we have, we have all the overlays, we have marijuana, we have solar, we have water protection, all that kind of stuff is, is going to be still within Chapter 4, so PRA's cluster, multi-use housing, yay.
Alright, um, next meeting is November 27th, the public hearing for One Main Street, I believe that's a sign.
Yes, it is.
Um, November 28th, we have a special town meeting at 7:00 PM at the Middle High School. Um, and December 11th, I don't see anything, so... Is there any public comment from the board?
Comment, comment, comment.
I'd like to mention the economic development sessions, that Greg and I have been to all three of them, and, uh, we were pleased to see David, the last one, um, they've been making some, some definitive progress, um, and, uh, I'd just like to encourage people to follow along, um, and get involved, please.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty productive meetings, yeah, but it's getting down to the time where we've got to make some structural decisions about whether we're going to form a committee and that sort of thing, so if people want to get involved, now's the time. Grounds ward!
Public comment from the public. Alright, hearing done, ongoing items, Charter Review, I think we've covered, economic development, um, we're scheduled to have another meeting at some point in the future with us, the Board of Selectmen?
I think it'll probably be in December at some point, with the Board of Selectmen and the Sewer Commission.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's either the 5th or the 19th would be the, the non-sewer nights.
Mm-hmm. Alright. Complete Streets, I don't think there's any new updates on that. Board comments and concerns, Michael Ray had approached me and wanted to express some of his views, so I gave him a spot on the agenda.
Thanks. So, one of the things that, um, for different reasons, this has come up, but it's looking at the registered marijuana dispensaries, so what, what, one of the, so I, what I handed out to you was basically, really quickly, on, um, December 30th of last year, the state changed the definition of marijuana, and the highlight that, that I handed out to you says that, basically, marijuana, uh, the following words provided, however, the terms agriculture, aquaculture, floriculture, and horticulture shall not include the growing cultivation, distribution, or dispensation of marijuana as defined in, and there's multiple sections which include the, um, you know, the, the medical and the recreational type stuff. So, going through our RMD laws, uh, or RMD bylaw, I proposed some minor changes to be more compliant with the current definition. Now, reading through this, it appears as though when this was written, the understanding was that marijuana was an agricultural activity, and so it was, this bylaw was written along the framework of it being an agricultural activity. So one of the things that is allowed, and, and there's only two changes that I'm proposing, and it's under, the previous statement read cultivation and or agricultural processing are allowed in all districts by right if the applicant is eligible for protection under Section 250, 4.1.1.2, which is the section that gives you the ability to do agricultural stuff in your land, um, and Master Law 48, which is the medical, the public health, um, medical marijuana state laws.
No, 48, Section 3 is the agricultural protection.
Thanks, agricultural protection. Any cultivation within a building will require a special permit. So what I propose this changing to is, um, that RMD facilities, and now, I met with town council to get clarification, saying, now that this basically says, if you have the land, and if you can meet the state standards, you know, how does this now translate with the new definition of marijuana? And what town council advised was that if the land's primary purpose is for an agricultural reason, then our bylaws afford for it to be allowed by right. So what I'm proposing is that we basically keep that language, but we clarify it. And my proposed clarification is, RMD facilities that cultivate and process but do not retail marijuana are allowed in all districts by special permit if the applicant is eligible for protections under... for protections under, and it contains the same protections, and if the cultivation will remain a secondary use. Cultivation must be within a building. Now, this is a clear addition to this one, which is requiring the addition for it to be within a building. And then the other change is later on, and, and now that marijuana is more along the lines of being considered a commercial or industrial activity and not an agricultural activity, to also look at our setbacks and to change them. Currently, it says that any cultivation located outside of retail, commercial, office parks, that they shall be surrounded by a buffer strip, which shall be 200 feet in depth. I suggest that we delete that and we change that to 2,500 feet from abutting residential structures, property lines. Now, looking at some of the larger properties in town, this will not affect any farm, any of the larger farms in town at all.
It's a quarter mile.
I'm aware. Yeah. It will, it's almost a half a mile. But it will, it will not affect any of the larger farms in town. They still, just as they do now, will continue to retain the ability to, to grow marijuana for medical reasons. This does not have any impact on that. In my view, the only thing that this really changes is that right now, based on the current bylaw, if a medical marijuana facility wanted to set up in a residential neighborhood that had a primary agricultural purpose, they could put this on 200 feet from property lines. Now, there are no outdoor marijuana grow facilities in this state yet, but it's to protect that concern. So this is what I'm just, you know, we can't make any decisions on this. I just wanted to give this to you guys to have some time to look at, just to see where my thoughts were on this, and I think that there certainly is a need for further conversation.
I have some input. The Section 3 of Chapter 48 is the agricultural exemption.
Yeah.
That is where everybody that farms gets their ability to thumb their nose at zoning and whoever doesn't like what their animals smell like, because it's a right-to-farm state. So Chapter 48, Section 3 is the right-to-farm exemption, and all they did was add at the end of that right-to-farm exemption was, pot is not pot. Pot is not a cultivator. It's not.
Yeah, they said it's not a crop, basically.
So they didn't really, they didn't really redefine pot, they just redefined what the exemption for farming is.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if you understood that.
I did. And what I wanted to ensure was that I think that the sentiment in town previously was that it, we will consider this to be some form of farming. And so I think that what, what my proposed changes allow is for this to still be a secondary use on farms. You know, the, the difference, of course, being.
A half a mile from your house?
The difference being, is, the difference is this, marijuana, unlike any other crop, comes with security concerns. And, you know, 200-foot buffer, I mean, if you, you know, there are facilities around, and you can probably speak more, I know that.
How many farms do we have that have?
I don't think a buffer speaks to security at all, but.
Have a mile diameter or a mile.
My mother's place is 100 acres, and she's got 2,400 and something feet of frontage, and it's practically square, so 100 acres would not be able to facilitate.
Correct, yeah. Not even close.
Not even close.
Like over 1,000 acres.
So it's essentially what you.
Who's got a farm that's 1,000 acres?
Christopher Robin. What you have to be careful of, just, just from experience, you have to be careful of zoning something out of your community haphazardly. You can't set, if someone wants to grow it and they can't find a lot in your town to grow it on, because nothing meets those, those dimensional setbacks of 2,500 feet, then they can say that it is injurious and it is capricious. They'll win on that.
Now, that is only for, and, and looking through things, you know, when you come up with this kind of placement, that is, now that this is considered an industrial or commercial activity, and our bylaws basically will permit this in residential neighborhoods, an industrial or commercial activity, it's saying if this is going to be in a residential neighborhood, then it must be 2,500 feet from the residential property lines. And looking through the GIS, there are several farms in town that this will not impact.
Hmm.
And I looked at your families, and I didn't, from my view, and maybe we should lower this threshold, but I didn't think that you guys would be impacted by this either.
It's the 13th largest parcel in town, I think.
Yeah, I, I thought you guys would be fine. But we can certainly look at decreasing it, but that's basically the shift, is that there are no other industrial or commercial activities.
You got to start, I mean, you got to think, first of all, you have to be a half a mile setback from the road, right? Because your property line, the residential property line is the road, right? So to start with, whatever greenhouse you're going to put up, it's got to be a half a mile away from your house, which may be right on the road. So I think the setbacks, I mean, if you want to increase them beyond 200, maybe we talk about that, but 2,500 feet, don't forget, this is an enclosed facility, right? It's not like an open field.
Yeah.
This is, this is basically a greenhouse.
But it's an industrial use in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I think you'd have better luck with something like that if you wanted to, I mean, I could see you making an argument for that around a school. So it cannot be within 2,500 feet of a school, you know what I mean? Or it cannot be within 2,500 feet of a prison, or it cannot be within, you know what I mean? Something like that seems like it would make sense, but I think.
It's 500 feet from the school.
Yeah, it's 500 feet from the school.
500 from the school, in document.
Oh, okay.
It's just 500.
Anyway, I'm, I'm with you on principle, but I think that you might be overreaching with the setback.
What setback do you think would be more appropriate? 1,000 feet?
I'd need time to think about that.
All right, well, we can certainly go.
Running up against the clock again. I, I did have the chance to sit down with Michael Ray. I hope he wasn't expecting an action to be taken tonight.
No, no, we can't.
But, but he did raise some points that I think are valid, so that's why I gave him the time to speak to it.
Thank you for the initiative.
Right, no, 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 I do appreciate the fact that he's bringing these things forward.
At this time of night, anyway, I'm like, uh.
Yeah. So I would like for us to continue to engage this, just to kind of get this on our minds, to make sure our bylaws are compliant with the intent of what was designed, you know, and that we continue to recognize marijuana, as I think we probably should, as somewhat of an agriculture activity. But, you know, keep going. The last thing I wanted to bring up.
Sorry, but just in regards to this, is this fall under an accessory use due to the fact that?
No, this is a special, it's a special use.
All right.
But is any?
We are also awaiting guidelines.
Yeah.
Nope, this is RMD.
Oh, this is our, oh, oh, right.
No, this is just for medical.
Right, medical, sorry.
And it's just looking at, I've already explained it.
Yeah, all right.
All right, the other thing that I wanted, that I handed out to you guys was a student initiative, and, and I'm not going to read it, it's right in front of you guys, but what I'm looking for from you today is if this is something that you guys can agree that I can continue or start to work on. I reached out to the superintendent of the schools, and she certainly was very interested. Her recommendation, because my target was the high school audience, her recommendation was both middle school and high school audience, and then also looking at different points of contact that they already have, existing things within the curriculum that account for, you know, civics and, you know, et cetera, and looking at a way that we can kind of go with them to do a curriculum enhancement. So what I proposed was just a couple of different goals, coordinate activities, and the general framework for the work product. The idea behind this would be that I would get this in motion, start kind of moving parts, and then come back to the board before we move anywhere. But it's just seeking your permission to proceed along this idea.
Looks fine to me, Mr. Cherry, you have 30 seconds.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with allowing Mr. Jeffries to pursue these, as long as just caution that he doesn't represent anything on behalf of the board, I don't have an issue.
And that you not commit us until you come back to us.
Of course not.
Yeah, I'm not required to speak in front of the senior class.
You're subbing on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Mr. Cherry, I move that we adjourn.
Second? Anybody second?
Second.